It is Tuesday, July 12th at the appointed hour, 6:00 PM. My council is all here. Looks like the wander team is here. Glad you all made it through traffic, heard there was a wreck. The first thing on the agenda and the second thing are the prayer and the pledge. Chapel Jenkins, I'd ask you to come up and say the prayer and Paul, if you would, then lead us into pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Creator God, we come to you today, God, first saying thank you. We just thank you for another opportunity to be present with you. We ask now, God, that you come into this room with fellow citizens, the mayor, officials, the town council, all of those who love this community, and ask that you be a blessing into their lives as they have discussions and create opportunities and just listen with one another, as they make decisions, as they talk about new plans, as they talk about new things that are on the horizon for this community. God, we just know that you will pour into their minds and to their hearts and ask that you lead them into this discussion. Bless the agenda. Bless the spirit in which they have discussions. Bless the spirit in which they either agree or disagree, but yet always in harmony as one body, as one unit, as one community. We ask all of these blessings in your name and let us all say amen.
Amen.
Face flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Pagalwini, are we in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, ma'am.
Item number four is the approval of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move the item on moratorium and permit allocation up to first part of planning new business that would become A1. I think we have a lot of people here who are interested in that and that would give us a way to go ahead and accommodate them. I know it's here somewhere, but I don't see it.
Are you there?
No, it's 11A3.
And you'd like that to become...
8A1.
8A1.
8A1, correct.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Call in favor.
Aye.
Oppose. And the ayes have it.
Motion approved of the amended agenda.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the amended agenda. Any questions, concerns, aye in favor, aye opposed, and the ayes have it. We have a couple of public hearings. The first one is you, Ms. Farrell, Christiane.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. You have one public hearing tonight from planning. This is a public hearing to receive in pet on a request to amend the comprehensive plan 2009 through 2019. This is a 2014 update, specifically the future land use map by changing the land use designation from rural conservation three to low density neighborhood. This is for a 16.23 acre tract of land located on Highway 17 north near the 10 Mile Community. It is comprised of three parcels and a portion of a fourth, all of which are described on your agenda.
Thank you very much. I don't have anyone that signed up here to speak on this public hearing. We do... Oh, I'm sorry. I do have someone. So we were... I thought we didn't. That's fine. Yes.
...for change from rural to urban.
Yes, and we'll call you as...
I'd like to speak on, pardon.
We will call you as your names are on the list and then we will ask if anyone else would like to address the council.
Pat Sullivan.
Come on, Pat. Somebody's got to stand up.
Well, I won't start the clock till now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Pat Sullivan, 1002 Plantation Court. Change in the comp plan. At the last meeting, the council decided to not change the comp plan. They changed their mind on the Trident Academy. So why would you change your mind again? This has been denied twice already except for the third time. We are talking, it's outside of the urban growth boundary. It's three units. It's one unit per acre and they... Yeah, one unit per acre. Also, the east side of 10 Mile Community is more dense than the west side simply because it was already developed and it was a common decision between Charleston County and Mount Pleasant for the urban growth boundary and what the density would be back in 2014. And I have a letter from the Charleston County Planning Department sent out today to Christiane and to all the council members saying, please deny this again. This is for the record. I don't know who I give it to, but... The other thing is, okay, outside the rural, it requires 50% be kept open space whereas if the comp plan is changed, it's only 25%. The people make reference to Tupelo and Pepper, which are zoned one unit per acre and they are 50% open space. Also, 4.86 acres are wetlands, which cannot be used towards open space. However, amenities can be used for open space in this if they change it and I think that's totally unfair.
Thank you, Pat.
One last thing. The last time, the developer said at 2.5 units per acre, his price range was 400, in the middle, 400s. This time, they're saying around 300,000. How could... The math doesn't work for me.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
Elliot Barrow.
That's all that have signed up for the public hearing. Ma'am, would you like to... Ms. Askew, would you like to address the council?
Yes. My name is Charlotte Jenkins and I live at 4116 Highway 70 North. I wasn't aware of the fact that I have approximately three and a half acre, mostly four acre, and I wasn't aware of the fact that I can only build one house on that. And I feel very mad about it. I think I hope that they would do some changes because on the other side, which is urban, which they say my... where I am is rural and on the other side is urban when they can have two and a half to three houses. And I think it's totally fair and I hope that they would do, make some changes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Ma'am, did you give your address? You live in a town or county?
I'm in the county. I'm 4116 Highway 17 North on Iron Door.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Anyone else here would like to address the council? Yes, sir. Mr. Askew?
Please state your name and address from the rest of the room. We'll listen to you. Good evening. My name is Timothy Askew, 977 Gassenville Road on... I said it before, we got urban on one side, rural on the other. Four, we can build four houses on the right side. On the left side, a lot of people in the community, they don't know how they get that three, one house to three acres. Everybody would make that changes. That's what the community wants. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
My name's Jack Richardson and I serve on the Mount Pleasant Affordable Housing Task Force. I'm here to invite every one of you to come to our Monday meeting at 12:00. We will have a special assigned community land trusts presenting for 20 minutes during that meeting and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this public hearing? When no one else, this public hearing is closed. We'll move on to the next hearing. Marcy?
For the purpose of complying with federal tax requirements, the South Carolina Jobs Economic Development Authority and the town of Mount Pleasant are holding a joint public hearing regarding the issuance by the authority of its education facility revenue bonds in one or more taxable or non-taxable series in a maximum aggregate amount not to exceed 11 million.
Thank you.
Marvin Arnsdorf?
I'm Marvin Arnsdorf. I live at 3548 Henrietta Hartford Road here in Mount Pleasant. I'm the board chairman for Oceanside Collegiate Academy, a brand-new high school that we've been needing for quite a while here in Mount Pleasant. We'll be opening our doors August 18th and we have a temporary facility that we'll be using in McClellanville and we'll be building our building hopefully very shortly once we get through all the permitting and everything else. And that'll be in Carolina Park at the... Right at the rec department and the airport. It's going to be a nice, safe school. We've got 600 kids and we've got a great collegiate academy and some great athletes that are going to be coming to our school. And I just wanted to come and present and answer any questions that anybody might have. If you'd like to see me afterwards, I'd also be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this issue?
Yeah.
Hearing none, this public hearing is closed. Peter, you'll take the mic and your guest?
There we go. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name's Peter Stellupild. I'm the executive director for the South Carolina Gold Star Families Memorial Monument Project. I have with me Mrs. Mary Frances Bishop and Mr. Pat Waters, who are also directors on our board. The Gold Star Families Memorial Monument recognizes families who've made sacrifices during wartime. Now, most people understand that obviously on the front page every day, we see people making sacrifices in the name of freedom. We see the vets coming back. We see wounded veterans. But the Gold Star Family Memorial Monument recognizes the families who've lost somebody. Very quick, brief history about what the Gold Star means. In World War I, families that had a son or daughter at war had a flag in their window, which was a white star on a blue field. If that individual was killed in action or killed during wartime activity or even sometimes peacetime activity, that star became gold. That's the beginning of the Gold Star Mothers. Over the years, that has morphed to where it has now become the Gold Star Families because let's face it, if you lose your father, that's just as painful as losing your husband, but in a different way. Woody Williams, who's Medal of Honor recipient, created the Woody Williams Gold Star Family Foundation in order to put one of these monuments in every state in the United States. I ran into Medal of Honor recipient Woody Williams by accident in Charlotte Airport and was immediately onboard. This monument, which will be placed in Patriots Point, where it faces east to west, you've got the cutout of the soldier. Just go back one little bit. And then on one side, it mentions that it's a Gold Star Families tribute to mothers, fathers, and Gold Star Families who sacrificed one for our freedom. The uniqueness is on the backside. This is what we have for South Carolina, which the board put together as well as the Gold Star Families. The homeland monument section represents the Low Country, the Mid Country, and Upstate. This is because this is South Carolina's Gold Star Family Memorial Monument, which we in Mount Pleasant are honored to have located here. The second panel is family. It shows a family saying goodbye to a loved one as they go off to battle or war or to their commitments. The third panel is patriot. As Mr. Woody Williams received his Medal of Honor on Iwo Jima, he felt it only fitting that the third panel patriot remain the same because it's representative of the struggle that we all face, both during wartime and after wartime, as members who support the troops and those of us who've lost somebody. The final panel recognizes sacrifice, to recognize the sacrifices made by families who've given their sons, daughters, fathers, husbands, mothers, to the cost of freedom. Again, this is a nondescript family receiving a flag at graveside, representing the ultimate sacrifice and the goal, the end goal of freedom that was fought for. We'd like to thank the town of Mount Pleasant and the board of the city council for the opportunity to speak today, to have this monument located at Patriots Point and to share this important information with the members. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat, would you like to speak? Would you like to address the council?
Well, I'd just say, I'd like to say one thing to add to Peter's statement. When you vision this silhouette...
The cutout.
The cutout. You have to think this will be facing east and west, so in the morning, the shadow of the soldier will pass to the west towards Charleston. And in the evening, it will come to the east. And it's always been a tradition in the military that you go west when you die because that's always what home was. And so this is the concept. This is a beautiful concept. Plus, you'll be looking through that to see the ship, see Charleston and...
Mount Pleasant.
Mount Pleasant.
The soldier will always be illuminated by the rising sun and the fading sun.
And the sun always shines in Mount Pleasant.
Always.
Very good. And the reason we asked for this presentation today to let the public know, we will be giving consideration later on in the agenda to support this memorial with a donation of $10,000. So I'd like to thank the finance committee for that and we will bring it forward to full council much later in the agenda. But thank you all for being here and thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Mayor, council members, will you join me up here? Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen, we had another successful blessing of the Fleet Festival this year. And Nicole Harvey, if you'll come up, please. She'll lead us in recognizing this year's beneficiaries. Nicole?
Thank you, Mr. Demora. Thank you, Town Council, for your support always. I want to call up the Magwood ladies, please, Jennifer, Ann, and Tressie, if you all would join me up here. And while they're walking up, I'm just going to take a second to totally embarrass Jennifer and say happy birthday. And then I also, before I start telling you, just a little bit about the blessing of the fleet. And I'll be quick because I know everybody wants to get on with it, but mark your calendars for the 30th on the 30th. So next year, we will have the 30th anniversary on April 30th. 29 years ago, the Magwood family brought together Shem Creek Shrimping Families in the town of Mount Pleasant to start the Blessing of the Fleet and Seafood Festival to thank residents for their support and to raise money for local nonprofits. Ann Magwood and the other wives would be seeing cook and shrimp all day and putting their kids to work when they were just little. The festival has become a favorite local pastime over the last three decades, winning many awards and most importantly, continually educating locals and visitors about the importance of supporting local shrimpers and fishermen who depend on us to demand local shrimp and seafood on our plates. The season is now in full swing and I hope you've all been stocking your refrigerators with the catch coming into Shem Creek. You don't have to look hard to figure out where to buy. As I speak, one of our shrimpers is at the farmer's market with some shrimp bagged and ready to buy and take home. And then there's also now a Saturday morning market at our Market Pavilion on Coleman Boulevard. We encourage you all to ask local restaurants where their seafood comes from and help us promote the local and well-caught seafood movement by posting to our page or Twitter with the hashtag #JustAsk when you find restaurants serving local seafood. Let's give those restaurants a shout-out for buying local so when we eat out, we can eat local. As this festival has grown, so has its need for community involvement on event day. We could not put this festival on without volunteer support. The local nonprofits chosen each year to benefit from the net proceeds of the event provide a lot in return. This year's beneficiaries, Camp Rise Above and Carolina Children's Charity, put a lot of work into helping fill 70-plus volunteer shifts. I should also note that many town employees volunteer their time and just about every department is represented on event day. Many of you sit in this room, so thank you. To all of our volunteers, we are truly grateful. They work... They were great to work with and we are humbled by their generosity of time. Camp Rise Above provides fun, life-changing camp experiences to children with serious illnesses, life challenges, and disabilities using volunteer labor and donated funds to provide camp-like experiences to MUSC Children's Hospital patients, partner with CCPRC for two-day summer camp sessions, and working to build a permanent camp facility to offer week-long overnight summer camps for children. There are more than 58,000 children in South Carolina with serious medical illnesses. They struggle every day with health challenges and Camp Rise Above offers them the chance to just be a kid at camp at little to no cost. Carolina Children's Charity assists Low Country children with diagnosed birth defects and/or childhood diseases to ensure they have access to medically necessary items or services, supported by volunteers and local fire departments, including ours. Last year, Carolina Children's Charity helped 116 special needs children and awarded grants totaling nearly $140,000. I would like to call up Erin Almer, Executive Director of Camp Rise Above, and Sonya Beal, Executive Director of Carolina Children's Charity, so that we can present them with donations of $5,800 each. Thank you both for all you do for our community.
Oh, and I didn't say, I always let Ann say a couple words. I just wanted to let Mama say a word.
I just want to say thank you to the town and Town Council for all the support that you all give us every year. Next year will be our big number 30 and if you all have any unique ideas that we could incorporate into the festival, something that would be really special, please let us know. We thank all our volunteers and all the people that come to the festival and all of the help that we get every year and we do appreciate it and thank you so much. I want to thank a really big thanks to Nicole Harvey. Without her, we wouldn't have much of a festival.
Councilman Smith, would you lead us in recognizing our Wando Boys Varsity Rugby Champions, please?
Yes, sir.
Champions, make your way to the stage, please. Champions, join us helping on the stage. Coaches, join us as well. Guys, we'll line up in front of the council members there and face the audience, please. Thank you all very much for being here while they're walking up. Mayor, council members, distinguished guests, we are absolutely delighted to have these very talented young men and their coaches here to be recognized and honored. Wando Rugby Club at Wando High School has two teams, an A-team and a B-team. The A-team finished an 8-1 win over their second state championship in three years. They haven't lost, listen to this, they haven't lost a regular season game in over three years until earlier this year, when South Greenville came back from a 20 to zero halftime score to hand us our only loss all year long to 26 to 20. The story does not end there. Stay with me. They dominated the rest of the season and were determined to win it all. In the playoffs, they defeated Greenville 33 to 10 in the state semifinals to set up a rematch with South Greenville in the championship game. They scored on the last play of the game to move to within one point. It's all on the line. It's a perfect Friday Night Lights HBO series scenario. They then had to make a nearly impossible two-point conversion for the win. Missed the kick and they lose. Charlie Van Vallet incredibly made the kick and they won 25 to 24. Truly unbelievable, the kind of stuff movies are made of. The B-team comprised of mostly first-year players and many freshmen, they were up against the A-teams from most of the other schools. You all know that's how we roll here in Mount Pleasant. And thus playing against juniors and seniors. They finished fifth place in the B division and ended up winning the plate trophy, a huge accomplishment for our B-team. For the A-team, the award winners were MVP Charlie Van Vallet. Best, let's give it up for Charlie. Best back and top scorer, John Cummins, senior. Charlie was, Charlie is a junior, was a junior. Best forward was Joe Schmidt, junior. Give it up for Joe. Rookie of the Year, Arthur Dole, a sophomore. Give it up for Arthur. Coach Todd Shepherd, all the coaches, we appreciate you raising up these giants, raising up these boys to make a difference in our community. Boys, the mayor and council members in all of your town here before you and out on the video world expects continued greatness from all of you. Keep up the great work. God bless you guys. Thank you very much. We do appreciate it very much. Eric, that's all for you. Thanks, man. Thank you, guys. I'm not to hear it. We got one coming back. Watch it. Thank you, everyone.
I like the two cats.
Nice job, folks.
They don't want to leave. They want to stay.
Thank you, guys.
Pat, you can come stay as Pat you want, you know.
Mayor, council, we have, ladies and gentlemen, we have some employees here deserving of being recognized for their years of service. And Chief Williams, will you lead us up?
Mayor, council, and our wonderful citizens, it's my opportunity to introduce and also celebrate Division Chief Dale Johnson, who is also our Fire Marshal here for the town for 20 years of service. Dale came to us 20 years ago as a tailboy firefighter. That means basically he began his career and between that time and now, he has been in our Fire Prevention Division for over 10 years and almost five years as our Fire Marshal. Basically Dale's primary duty is to make sure your citizens are kept well and safe, that we follow the codes, we follow the rules, and that everything is built right and that y'all are protected. And he does an outstanding job. He has dedicated a lot of time for this town and my organization, and also Dale is a Fire Chief in another volunteer fire department. So I get two ways here, but just for everybody to know, he is really a great asset to us mayor and council. He does outstanding job, and Dale, thank you, thank you for everything you have done for the last 20 years. Appreciate you.
here with us. Thank you, 25 years.
Myself and Steve go back a long ways from the days that I was the captain on the truck with him, he was my engineer. Went from district superintendent to training officer for the last 25 years. I worked directly with him and I've had some effort in developing him and training him and leading and guiding him. We've been through a lot of situations together and we can reminisce about some of the wonderful things that make our job so great. But what I want everybody to know that Steve is probably one of the most dedicated people you will ever, ever meet. He really loves this job and he loves this town. He's here anytime you need him, anytime I call him, and I know Karen has got time, she's got angry that I've called him, he's there leaving the house. If I pick up a telephone call, Drove's going to be here. And I just want everyone to understand there was kind of people that we have. When we are needed, we are here. And he leads by the example of being dedicated. If I said one thing, dedicated and truly, truly a success and a blessing to me and this organization. Steve, once again, thank you for 25 wonderful years.
I think Isaiah misses calling the rugby team. It's my pleasure to recognize Isaiah Young for 20 years of service to the town of Mount Pleasant. Isaiah started his employment with the town as a laborer in the sanitation department in July of 1996. In October of 1999, he was promoted to the position of vehicle operator. January 2001, he was promoted to the position of heavy equipment operator. Isaiah is a hard-working individual, has shown great perseverance over the years. He started at the bottom and worked his way up within the sanitation division. He's performed abramally for the town during good times and bad. He's one of the few individuals in the sanitation department that can run any of our many collection routes and can operate any piece of equipment that we utilize. Isaiah also serves our country as a member of the Army National Guard. We have an outstanding sanitation division and individuals like Isaiah play a vital part in making that happen. Isaiah, congratulations for 20 years of service. Now is fortunate. Ladies and gentlemen, mayor, council members, I have the pleasure this evening of recognizing one of your department managers for his tenure here and years of service. Jody Peel, will you come forward?
Jody. I love doing this. I can't tell you how much I love this man. Jody, you know, we have a large organization, we have many employees and all work hard. But sometimes, if we're honest about our organization, you can point to certain individuals that just make it all work. And Jody Peel is one of those individuals. And I've gotten to know Jody over the years, I think the first time I met Jody was in 2003, and have just always been so impressed with the way he performs and his commitment to duty. And Jody is a guy that gets it done. As a matter of fact, we receive complaints, you receive, complaints, not complaints, compliments. We receive compliments on a daily basis because we have so many fine people. No department receives more compliments than the Public Services Department here at the town in Mount Pleasant. And the Public Services Department is everywhere. I mean, they are picking up yard waste, they're picking up garbage, they're mowing fields, they're in the roadways. If there ever is an opportunity for something to go wrong some days, it could be in the Public Services Department because of all the work that they do. But by and large, it doesn't. It works, and it works because of the dedicated employees that are led by this man who gets it done and he's committed to this community and to this organization, to the citizens of this community. So without going on any further, it is my pleasure to recognize Jody Peel for his years of service and many, many more. Jody.
Well, a lot of good people were hired in '91 and '96, it seems like. Terry Steed, please come up.
Terry has been our Recreation Coordinator for youth basketball, adult basketball, and volleyball for 25 years. She's one of the few individuals on staff, maybe the only one on staff, who celebrated 25 years when the Jones Center celebrated 25 years. And the amazing thing is, if you look at a photograph from 25 years ago and you look at one today, she has not changed one bit. That's how much she loves the job that she does. She has the same disposition, she has the same attitude toward these kids, and these kids remember her, which is probably her biggest attribute, is that they will stop her in the mall, they will stop her on Main Street, they will stop her on the field, on the court, and talk to her, and they remember her. And the amazing thing about it is, they still listen to her. They listened to her when she was their coordinator when they played, and now they have kids coming up, they still listen to Ms. Terry. And there's no doubt that if anybody on my staff enjoys the work that she does, it's Terry. She, and we'll side note too, back in 91, 92, one of the first female basketball officials in the state of South Carolina to officiate a men's basketball game. So she has a ground pressure. It's a pleasure to have her own staff, and don't be surprised if you're up here celebrating 50 years with her.
That's one of the best parts of the town council meeting. Item number six is approval of minutes from the May 26, 2016, and June 8, 2016, special town council meetings, and the June 14, 2016, town council meeting, and the June 26 financial statement.
Go for approval.
Have motion, a second. Questions, comments, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the ayes have it. Item number seven is correspondence and public statements, and we have several people signed up to speak.
Sean Barnes?
Thank you. My name is Sean Barnes and I live in 1418 Barber Street, and I want to tell you that's great, the community and all the people that are here to help us out. I always come up and talk mainly about the same stuff, and the Indian Village or Old Village, or whatever you'd like to call it over there, have several concerns. One is taking, since we're not a development or a, we're just individual places over there, we've been subdividing all those lots, and that place has been there for a very long time. And I don't understand why there's a house there that it just doesn't, a house just doesn't go back, right? Then we start cutting up the lots, you've got all the oak trees, and then we have to come to council, and then council says, hey, well, we'll cut a couple more and move the trees in there. So let's go ahead and try to keep that down in the Mount Pleasant area. Also, I always talk about this, the traffic, when we can't, in Center Street are so bad, and we're all about, let's walk and let's run. Well, everybody's kind of scared unless you're on that little sidewalk. That's dogs, that's people, that's bicycles, nobody wants to ride on any of those streets because people are going 45, 50 miles an hour. I see it every day. I run every day. I know you don't believe it, but I run every day and I see it out there. So if we could just figure out something, instead of just sitting around going, well, we'll do it one day, could the day be the day? Could we go ahead and take care of our children in that area? I'd appreciate it. Thank you so much, and y'all have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes.
Barry Wolf.
Sean, did they fix that sign? Barry Wolf, 1468 Pocahontas, also in the Indian Village. Town of Mount Pleasant, South Carolina Code of Ordinances, 156.032 in regards to moratoriums. The most current-approved residential and mixed-use development chart available on the town website shows over 6,500 units in the pipeline. Actions tonight by this council alone can add another 170 to them. I've said this on several occasions, but the math is simple. 6,670 units is 16,000 people. 16,000 people is 67,000 car trips a day. There is severe division in this council. We have a member who thinks the property rights of large land stakeholders trump the quality of life and the will of the majority of our residents. We have another member who believes we just let the market take care of itself and do nothing to control our own destiny. Once again, after last month's council meeting, a member of this body went to local media to blame Save Shem Creek, the Creakers, for a decision that didn't suit him. Once again, I think that's beneath the dignity of this body. There is no doubt the abomination on Coleman Boulevard will serve as a source of distrust of the town leadership for years to come, past and present. It certainly doesn't reflect the vision of the majority. I'm sure we will hear heart-wrenching arguments from the realtors and developers tonight about the impact that a moratorium is going to have on affordability. They could care less about affordability. If they did, they would have done something about it. In the last seven years of free-for-all we've had, we're already making room for 16,000 people. Just so we understand, everybody in this room understands, that's 20% of our current population, 20% more. Don't need 180 days. We need two years. We're viewable every 180 days. It's got to stop. You're welcome, Mayor.
Pat Sullivan?
I bought my shrimp at the market this afternoon. Okay, Pat Sullivan, 1002 Plantation Court. One more thing on the 10-mile community issue. When I was reading the minutes from the planning committee, I noticed that Seaman Whiteside said something about they are working with the East Cooper Land Trust to dedicate open space. So I contacted Catherine Mayne, who's the executive director, and here's the answer I got back from her in an email. "The developer has not contacted me. One of my board members has discussed conservation easements in general with him. However, I understand the project is not far enough along at this point for specifics. As always, we do not block or endorse development projects. We are interested in working with willing property owners." Hope this helps, Catherine, and I'll leave this with y'all. Now, on the subject of a moratorium, here's the latest headline. Home sales soar 12.6%. And according to this article, it says, "The consistently solid growth in home prices has been driven by the highest resale activity in nine years and still-tight housing inventory." So I say, do this with caution if you want to do it. I bless it, but here's what I ask. Use some creativity. Put together a list of things that you want developers to do in the future. A list such as, if you're going to build a house or what builds blah, 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 we want you to donate, we give money to our green space program, we want you to give money to bus stops, we want you to give money to blah, blah, blah.
Thank you, Pat.
So please, add that to the moratorium if y'all are going to do it. Thank you.
Chris Kyle?
I've been here several times to speak against raised media, excuse me, Chris Kyle, 1426 South Jetties Court, and owner of Chris's Dry Cleaning at 808 Coleman Boulevard. I have been against the raised median in front of my business since January of 2011. I've sent numerous emails, letters, phone calls, personal visits, my two minutes at each month of this meeting, for several meetings. Apparently I've fallen upon deaf ears. As of now, the vote has been five in favor of the median and four against. It could have been the opposite if Mark Smith, what you told me in a personal meeting in front of my business, that you were against the raised medians, you would not want one in front of your funeral homes, and as you walked away, I asked you again, are you against the raised medians? Well, you told me one thing, but voted against what you told me. Otherwise, I would have reversed it. Again, you're not a man of your word, and I think in the position that you're in, you need to stick with what you tell someone. I now understand that this is in the hands of South Carolina Department of Transportation, which I have been in contact with and met with on several occasions. I've had several of them come out. We want you to give money to blah, blah, blah.
Thank you, Pat.
So please, add that to the moratorium if y'all are going to do it. Thank you.
Chris Kyle?
I've been here several times to speak against raised median, excuse me, Chris Kyle, 1426 South Jetties Court, and owner of Chris's Dry Cleaning at 808 Coleman Boulevard. I have been against the raised median in front of my business since January of 2011. I've sent numerous emails, letters, phone calls, personal visits, my two minutes at each month of this meeting, for several meetings. Apparently, I've fallen upon deaf ears. As of now, the vote has been five in favor of the median and four against. It could have been the opposite if Mark Smith, what you told me in a personal meeting in front of my business, that you were against the raised medians, you would not want one in front of your funeral homes, and as you walked away, I asked you again, are you against the raised medians? Well, you told me one thing, but voted against what you told me. Otherwise, I would have reversed it. Again, you're not a man of your word, and I think in the position that you're in, you need to stick with what you tell someone. I now understand that this is in the hands of Southland Department of Transportation, which I have been in contact with and met with on several occasions. I've had several of them come out and look at my property and look at points that would be negative effects to my business. And I just don't see why you would want to do this when it will hurt my business and income. You speak about planned redevelopment. It appears to me that this is forced redevelopment, to force us out, small businesses like me that have been on Coleman Boulevard for 35 years. Again, it's a shame that you voted this way. I'm sorry you've taken that route. When the time comes...
Thank you, Chris.
Okay. Thank you.
Gray Taylor?
Good evening. Gray Taylor, 652 Coleman Boulevard. On tonight's agenda, there are six applications for annexation into the town. I've spent the last two months working on yet another application for annexation for a large tract, interestingly, one that was already approved through the county and more or less fully entitled. These annexations generate impact fees, increase our tax base, and help us continue our economy to grow. I don't represent any of these six annexations before you tonight, but if I did, I'd probably be telling them that they might want to consider a deferral. How can the town justify requiring a property under annex in order to obtain sewer service, but then, at the same time, propose or consider denying or limiting the number of available building permits? Building permits that are readily available to the county if they had sewer service? Last month, in reviewing the proposed change to the comp plan for Trident Academy, a council member was adamant that the town should not be picking winners and losers. Yet tonight, same council member proposes a plan by which we would pick far more winners and pick far more losers than were ever decided by the Trident Academy proposal. Lastly, I'd urge you to be truthful with the residents about the infrastructure improvements. We, much has been said about the need to slow growth to allow infrastructure to catch up. Let's look, rather than a sample, let's look at Highway 41. You consider the time needed to obtain funding, environmental permitting, an environmental lawsuit, design, and building it. It's unreasonable to think that Highway 41 is going to be expanded any time in the next 10 years. Are we going to impose a moratorium and tell our taxpayers that they're better off developing in the county without sewer service for the next 10 years? I don't think that's fair to the town. I hope this council will vote against any proposed permit moratorium or any permit allocation scheme. I lived and worked through the last one. I can tell you it didn't work. It caused a lot of harm. People lost their jobs, people lost their livelihoods, and damage was done to people's economic futures that will never be recovered. Creatively, we found ways around it, and it benefited the lawyers, really, and no one else. I hope this town will consider this scheme carefully tonight, and in the words of Councilman Bustos, to enact it would be nothing more than the arbitrary selection of winners and losers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. That's all. Thank you. Order, please. That's all I have signed up to speak. Is there anyone else that would like to address this body on this issue? Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am? This, about this issue, or public speaking, this is public comment, so, yes. Apologize. I lose my place sometimes.
Madam Mayor, members of council, my name is Tom McLaughlin, and I have an authentic Charlestonese accent, so I apologize somewhat for that. I am here to speak in favor of the moratorium. I've lived in Mount Pleasant, I grew up on the peninsula, I've lived in Mount Pleasant since 1907, 46 years. I don't want to go back in 1907, and that's impossible. But what kind of vision do we want for our town in the next four, five, six, maybe even 10 years? The traffic right now is off-the-charts horrible. It's just horrible. I left the Target, I had to run an errand for my wife before I came here. I left the Target, everybody knows where that is, at 5:30. I got here at 5 after 6, taking the backwoods routes. Could not come down 17, could not come down Coleman, could not come down Mathis Ferry. Traffic north and south is backed up to beat the van, so to speak, and it begins about 4 o'clock. All right? I am 100% in favor of the moratorium, and I hope the council sees the light to pass that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Good evening. I'm Betsy Fanning, I'm the head of Trident Academy, 1455 Wackendaw Road. I'm just here because I want to give you the Trident Academy update, let you know what has happened with us in the last month since the council voted to uphold the comp plan against our bid to take it off of our property. We have, we are still thriving, still growing. I've hired three new teachers, I've accepted several new students. Trident Academy is alive and well, and will continue to grow and be the school that we all know and love as a haven for children who learn differently. I do want you to know that we are entertaining some offers. They are not as lucrative as we would like, only because our, the property value has been devalued because of holding on to the comp plans. Very difficult to find schools and churches who have the money that we need in order to sell. However, we are entertaining all offers as they come in. And I do want to also thank those of you who came by and visited with us after the vote, those opposed and those with us. We appreciate your support. We appreciate that you understand what we do and why we do it, and we ask that you continue to keep us in the forefront of your mind. I loved it that we were mentioned several times tonight, Trident Academy, any good word is a good word, and Trident Academy has been in the news. Thank you very much. And we will continue to be positive in our outlook. So thank you for your time, and I'll be back next month.
Mr. Barrow, would you like to speak?
Thank you. My name is Elliot Barrow, Chuck Dolly Boulevard, here in Mount Pleasant. Just for everybody's edification, I'm a lawyer. I was a lawyer when we had restrictions on construction around here before, and I'm proud to say I didn't make one dime, not even one penny off of it. This council, as everybody knows, serves all of the residents of Mount Pleasant, not just developers, not just realtors. The developers and realtors have come up with a very clever argument. They claim that they are guardians of all of the residents of Mount Pleasant, and they do that in order to curry favor with this council. They maintain that a moratorium will somehow limit housing inventory. That's a very cute word in terms of this, the context of this, that that will inflate prices, first-time home buyers and workforce people will be forced out of Mount Pleasant. This argument is nothing but sophistry and a ruse. If they were truly concerned about first-time home buyers and about the workforce, they wouldn't be tearing down the only affordable housing in this community over there on Vincent Drive and putting up half a million-dollar townhouses. They wouldn't be putting half a million, they wouldn't be trying to worm their way into the Snouton neighborhood and put up houses that are going to start at half a million dollars. They wouldn't be building thousands of fancy houses in Carolina Park, which will maybe start at a low, and I use that term advisedly, of $400,000 and escalating into seven figures. They wouldn't be building thousands of apartments all over this community that rent for a minimum of $2,000 a month or sell for in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. This has got to stop, and as Mr. Bustos very astutely observed just recently, this council is the only group that can do it.
Thank you, Mr. Barrow.
We need to establish a moratorium, and we need to do it now. Thank you.
Order, please. Yes, ma'am?
Sarah Frankel, and my address is 821 Dentons Road in Mount Pleasant. I'm here to, to address some of the plans that we have been hearing about in relation to the Trident Academy property, and that some members of the council are considering having the town purchase the property. We think this is a wonderful, wonderful development. But I want to talk about what this, what this investment means, and what the return on this investment is going to be. It's not going to be monetary. Or it could be if we put in, some of the suggestions are to put in a recreational complex where the town could earn some money back. There's another proposal to make the town, I'm sorry, the, the property passive recreational. So there's, I'd like to talk about what that return would be if it's not monetary. That return would be protecting green space, protecting our community, protecting our neighborhoods, protecting our quality of life. If we don't save it, it's, it's, it's going to be developed eventually. We're afraid that if we, if we don't act on this, if the town doesn't act on this, the developer will come back, or a developer will come back, and we'll be right back here defending it again next year or in a year and a half. This could be a wonderful development for the community. We are lacking in open space. Our neighborhoods, Wackendaw and Candlewood are older communities, older neighborhoods, and green space wasn't built in at that time when our houses were built. So this is a perfect space to retain for the community, and I hope you consider purchasing it as a town. Thank you.
Heather Lehman, 1242 Chatfield Street. I just want to applaud you guys for having this actually on the agenda. When, you know, we're all sitting here fighting traffic, destruction, all the stuff going on, we're overdeveloping at a very rapid pace. But on the agenda today, page 9 of mine, it says, "Legal and contractual, council will discuss the possibility of purchasing for property, possible purchase of property for recreational use." And I do believe it's outside of Shem Creek, and I applaud you guys for that, because there's more than just Shem Creek, there's the rest of Mount Pleasant, too. And this person, I think, is, make a huge difference in where we're going as a town, along with all the other things that are going on. But I mean, it's time to save some field, save the green space, help a school out that really, you know, deserves to be able to sell their land at a fair price, and the town can definitely use it and use it well. I personally live, my neighborhood, my house backs up to the field. I don't care. We have 200 cars a day going back and forth to use the field. I think that's what it's meant for. If there's that many cars going to use it, then we really need more. So it's just trying to do something to help the community, help the kids, and I do believe the school deserves to have it, the town to buy it. And the community does, too. I apologize, I'm bad at public speaking.
Thank you, Heather. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Taylor? That's fine. Well, this is public comment. You're certainly welcome to hold your comments until we get to the item. Is there anyone else that would like to address this under public statements? Thank you very much. Moving on on the agenda. We had an amendment to the agenda, and Mr. Bustos has requested item number 11, bear with the joke so I can get to it, 11A3, consideration of a possible action regarding a residential building moratorium and the re-establishment of a building permit allocation program. And that is now moving to planning new business number 8A1. Mr. Bustos?
Thank you. And I had asked that this, these items be put on the agenda for this reason. Across Mount Pleasant on a daily basis, I don't believe I have spoken with one homeowner, one resident, one visitor, who has not spoken about traffic, spoken about overdevelopment, spoken about the number of homes being built and the number of homes that seemingly at every corner, at every turn, they're being constructed. And it occurred to me that we're asking our residents to sacrifice on a daily basis so that these homes can be built. They sacrifice in traffic, they sacrifice when they send their children to school, they sacrifice in the time it takes to get to their jobs. And at some point, I think it's unfair to ask the residents of Mount Pleasant to continue that sacrifice without us doing something to try to alleviate all those things that negatively impact quality of life. Currently, we have an impact fee study in progress, because we found that the development, those, the development community paid impact fees, paid only 48% of what was allowable or the impact of growth. We ask the taxpayers to pay 52% at present. We also have an affordable housing task force that is moving forward. However, their job will not be done in the next three or four months. If anyone really considered the traffic, all they had to do was look at the traffic on 526, where an overturned pickup truck snarled the town of Mount Pleasant's traffic. All that traffic turned around and went on Coleman Boulevard and Johnny Dodds this afternoon. It took, as the gentleman said, half an hour just to get from Target to here, and that's the, that's what we're seeing daily. We see trailers in the schools. Our schools are overcrowded. The character of Mount Pleasant is slowly being changed because of all this development. That which was so great in this town and caused all of us to move here and to come back here to enjoy our town is slowly, that quality of life is slowly going away. We all know that residential development doesn't really pay for itself, not in impact fees and not in property taxes that somewhere down the road, most of the time, a year down the road, that we collect. There are those that say it should be left to supply and demand. Left to its own, we will be a community of nothing but 500,000 to $1 million houses. Mr. Gray makes a good point. Highway 41 will not be ready for years. So do we continue to build and build and build when we know we have a failing road? Or do we take steps to manage growth and try in some way to keep that from being such a sacrifice that our residents have to make to go on Highway 41? I think it's too much to ask, and I think it's incumbent on this body to do something about it. I was on council when we had another moratorium, and we had permit allocation, and it was very successful. And we were one of the few communities, because of it, when the recession or the downturn in, in the economy happened, that we didn't have houses that were half-built. We didn't have houses that were built and not purchased, because we didn't have that much speculative building going on. Consequently, the builders did not have to pay property taxes on houses that were sitting empty. The houses that were built because of permit allocation were quickly occupied, and Mount Pleasant didn't have those barren areas in Mount Pleasant. So for that reason, I am going to make a motion, one that we establish a moratorium initially for 120 days to give our Affordable Housing Task Force, to give our staff time to complete the impact fee study, so that we can truly have growth paying for growth. And that can be extended, just as the apartment moratorium can be extended. And that will also give staff time to... And that will also give staff time to resurrect or reestablish, bring the permit allocation back to us. And we can then truly manage growth by issuing permits. Now, one thing that I'm not suggesting is, and that question was asked, does this mean that everything that is approved and in the process now would be stopped? And the answer is no, we can't do that. But we should stop issuing new permits, and we have some 6,000 or so? 6,700 that are in the pipeline now. I think we need to do something now so that we can not overwhelm our infrastructure, our schools, our police departments, our public services, so that we can get ahead and start collecting impact fees and find ways to get ahead of the curve on this side. So I can go ahead and make the motion now for the moratorium. That is my motion.
I have a motion in second discussion?
Can I hear the motion again, please?
The motion is to establish a moratorium initially for 120 days to let the impact fee study be completed, the Affordable Housing Task Force complete their studies, and for the staff to also reestablish, bring to council the reestablishment of the permit allocation program.
Yes, sir.
And Joe, when you say that, if that's successful tonight, you're saying it will apply to anything that's coming before us tonight and in the future, as far as the moratorium?
Well, as our, what we did before, as you, I'm sure you remember, is people brought plans in, and they could be approved, but the permits would not be issued except by, you know, according to the allocation program. And things that are going on now, obviously, we can't stop. People vested, you know, there's money invested. But, and permits have been issued. Those, I don't think we can do anything on. But anything that comes in now, we need to hold, and that should be subject to an allocation program.
Yes, I see the gentleman answered that.
Thank you. I'll have more questions, but I want to shift to Mr. Pagre. Just quickly, Joe had mentioned vested, trying to find out what's vested and what's not. What is the definition in this dialogue we're having of vested?
Right, a vested right is in our state code, if a landowner property or has essentially a plan that's been approved and is in process, then there'd be a vested right. Each property would have to be looked at individually to determine what, if any, vested right exists.
So if something's been approved two readings by council, but it still has to go back to Planning Commission for a plat or what have you?
Yeah, not trying to be a vested.
And I'm not trying to split hairs.
Right, for example, if it was a sketch plan's been approved, and there's a vested right to that stiff land, we're talking about permits, as I understand it here. So it would really depend what's vested and what stage they're at.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arch. Mr. Santos?
He had one for David again. David, in the event, let's just say this vote is successful, would a pending ordinance doctrine be applicable here in this, if we have first reading tonight? And secondly, you know, this won't take effect until the second reading, correct?
Two questions.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. I don't know that there's an ordinance. The motion is for a moratorium on permits, and you would have to attach pending ordinance before the final reading. So the answer is yes and yes. Yes, there would have to be a second reading.
But could the pending ordinance be attached to this first vote, or does it have to be the second vote?
It could be. Well, it could be part of this motion, or it could be amended to include that as part of this motion. But yes, typically amendments are made at the second reading. But it could be attached to this if that's your wish.
So, Joe, would you amend your motion to include that so that we don't have a, you know, a rush for ordinances between now and next round, next reading, or permits?
I need some legal clarification. So if there's no ordinance, what's the pending ordinance on? Because we won't have an ordinance until we're finished with the final reading.
Well, this is a proposed ordinance.
So it's pending ordinance on a proposed ordinance.
Right, but it would have, if it were approved, it would have first reading. So it would be first reading of the ordinance.
I will amend my second to reflect your.
Yes, I amend, to add pending ordinance doctrine.
Yes, sir.
Can we ask Kristy Ann to come forward and tell us what's on the table up in the 41 area? If she's comfortable with knowing that?
Absolutely, and I'm sure y'all all got your July report, so hopefully you have your July report handy. Why's it coming?
Well, it sounded like a teacher I had back.
Well, I have mine if you'd like to do mine.
I got mine, just a second.
Ms. Carroll, you have a question for Ms. Farrell?
Just, can you tell us in the audience what is on the board right now in the 41 area? I know that's a big area, but I guess we're talking more about Rivertown, Dunes West, the ones that feed out to 41. Can you tell us what projects are and at what stages they're in up there?
Okay, well, Dunes West is, the next big thing to come through at Dunes West would be the Fishing Village, which already has an impact assessment approval, and they're in the process of installing the infrastructure. And that was a hundred-some-odd units. It was a mixture of some single-family and some townhouses in there. There are certainly some different, I don't have a specific number on Dunes West, but the harbor is not, is not complete. There are portions of Marsh Cove that are not complete. And then they do have some residual areas that may be developed commercial, maybe be developed residential. We don't know. They definitely have some unplanned areas at this point in time. Rivertown and, Rivertown is getting close to completion, most of those. They still have certainly the ability to, some vacant lots and the ability to do some additional development. But aside from that, in that end of Highway 41, those would be the only two that would have any sort of approvals, the plan development, sketch plans, or preliminary plats in place. There was a development that was, or attractive land that was recently annexed into the town. It's more the Phillips Community area. They do have, I think, preliminary plat already on it. Certainly have sketch plan, but I'm certain that they have preliminary plat as well. That was less than 100 units by far, and I don't even know what the name of it was. I don't recall. But it is located, if you're going towards the Wondro River, it's located over on the left-hand side. Otherwise, that would be it in the Highway 41 corridor, except for Park West that may feed into.
41?
41.
So under this proposal, the one she's mentioned, they would be included in the moratorium or outside of the moratorium, as she explained?
You're not asking names?
That's an answer for legal, I guess.
I can't tell you.
Because she said sketch plan, she said out-of-the-ground work, but not, I guess, not going before design review and all that, so.
Right, I thought I heard that those things that had any vested right would not be included. Is that what you said, sir?
So vested right is foundation work, or what is it? I'd like to know.
Well, a vested right can be converted a number of ways. It could be a sketch plan, it could be anything of the sort. So as I said earlier, there's a number of ways that a vested right can be conferred. So we'd have to look at each property individually to determine whether it would fall under this proposal or not.
Can we do that before second reading?
All the properties in Mount Pleasant is the top.
No, no, I'm talking about maybe the 100 here, the 100 there, the 50 there, that kind of thing. I'm not talking about people just building a house in old Mount Pleasant. But they would be included, of course, in the permit allocation. But I'm talking about the biggies, the ones that we're talking about that add to the numbers, as Mr. Bustos is referring to. Now, Oyster Point, can we talk about Oyster Point for a minute? That's fully vested?
Well, before we talk about Oyster Point, perhaps we could talk about all the planned developments and all the permits that go with those units. They would be excluded per, wouldn't the planned development agreement supersede the allocation?
Well, two different terms, to make sure that we get the terms straight. A development agreement, we only have a couple. We have Carolina Park, Watermark, which was essentially complete, so it's probably not worth really discussing, and Central Mount Pleasant. And that is different than a planned development. We have, those neighborhoods that are just named happen to also be planned developments. So too are Rivertown, Dunes West, Ion, any number of those are planned developments. So it's a little bit different. I think the development agreements that we have, Carolina Park, Central Mount Pleasant, and again, Watermark, not much consideration towards that. But those are vested within that development agreement and may not be subject to the same conditions that come about as a result of any actions here that some of the other planned developments be. But that's really a question probably for Mr. Pagre, any way you can on.
Thank you. Are you good?
Just good to the point that can we find out where each of these multiple unit subdivisions are before second reading? Or included or out, or not included? So we do have a serious request here to limit, and if we're going to do that, let's talk about the ones that are going to contribute the numbers, which is my point.
Are you satisfied, Ms. Carroll?
Thank you.
Mr. Arch?
Thank you. Joe, you and I talked about this a couple of times in the past couple of months, so I understand where you're coming from, by the way. But me, as y'all know, I'm sticking with the process. I need to back up a minute. He's asked for a pending ordinance, but there's not an ordinance that he's asking for. He's asked for a moratorium. So I just need to understand how to connect those before we go any further because I get the pending ordinance, and I understand even what we're trying to say, that we don't want to rush. But it's a moratorium, he's not asked for an ordinance. So maybe I'm just, I've got myself confused over this, so help me out.
Well, and I would think, just as the moratorium for apartments, when we voted that evening, the next day, no more, no new plans for apartments were accepted, as I understood. Now, this would be the same. But those that are in, already in the process, it is my feeling we can't stop. And that's part of why it's so important because, as Mr. Wolf said, some 6,000 permits are in the works right now, and then there are some that may not be, we may not, because of development agreements, we may not be able to impact those.
I understand that. I guess I'm back, David, I think you understand what I'm trying to ask you about. It sounds like I've been to weeds, but.
Yeah, I know that I was clear before, but I think the question was, is this an ordinance? Is someone, I think Robert's rules allow a council member to raise an issue that's on an agenda in this case as an ordinance. So, I mean, I think we're talking about, what are we calling it? It would be a town ordinance, it would be effective, it would have that effect.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Train?
Thank you. Ms. Farrell, in, earlier this year, the Property Owners Association at Dunes West asked to meet with me, and I met with them, and they showed me a graph that under the development agreement for Dunes West, which was recently part of a purchase, I believe, that there are something like 700 more homes that are under the agreement could be built out there. I think we touched base on that. Is that, can you explain how that can be?
That may generally be correct. They, Dunes West and Park West collectively can build 8,000-plus units. 5,000 are allocated to Park West, 3,000-some-odd units allocated to Dunes West per an agreement between those two parties. Dunes West, that very well could be accurate. I don't have the exact numbers for Dunes West right now, but they very well could have that number. We feel pretty certain that Park West will never reach its total maximum. They just don't have the land available. Dunes West is probably going to get a little bit closer, I think, to their 3,000, but again, may not be able to accomplish the total. 700 would sound fair to me.
And so those are already by development agreement?
Plan development. They do not have a development agreement.
Those are by PD, I guess, by plan development. Those are already quote-unquote approved? Those don't have to come back through this council for approval?
The only way that something in Dunes West could have to come back to you is if a portion, attractive land, meets our thresholds for an impact assessment. It could have to come back to you for impact assessment. Portions that are less than the threshold for impact assessment will, that need a sketch plan or need a preliminary plat would still have to go to Planning Commission at least.
Right. Okay, so whatever those thresholds are, if people live up Highway 41, which already, as we know, has an F level of service right now, there could potentially be 700 more homes up that way. Is that correct?
Over time, and again, I'm not, I'm going, that number sounds generally accurate.
It was 700 plus, but I don't know exactly what it is. So, you know, as a council member, I mean, I don't see any other way, and that's why I seconded this motion, to put that many more, however you get there from here, that many more homes on a major artery in this town that already has an F, a failing level of service, to me is unconscionable. And I don't think anybody designed Mount Pleasant to where you would have to take this kind of measure. But, you know, it's not our job to oversee a real estate market. It's not our job to pick the winners and losers. It's our job to make sure that we have a livable town and a town that people can get around in and a town that people can get out of if we have a hurricane come. And so that's why I intend to support this measure. And one other thing on the impact fees, to borrow from the words of Elliot Farrell, who sent me an email, what we have been doing is privatizing profits and socializing the cost. And I don't think anybody in this room, maybe there's an avowed socialist in here, but I doubt it. But to have the people of Mount Pleasant paying 52% of 20-year-old cost estimates is to privatize profits and socialize costs. And if you're all for socialism, then vote against this tonight. If you like to continue to have the people of Mount Pleasant picking up the cost for private development in this town, where development, we know, this is not an opinion, development does not pay for development in this town, and then it costs us, I believe, $2,100 per unit of residential units in public services for this town, then, you know, have at it. But I think the people of Mount Pleasant need a break. Everywhere I go, people ask when we're going to rain in growth. I've not had one person come up to me and say, "I'm really worried. There's not enough growth in development in Mount Pleasant." There's plenty. We're not putting anybody out of work. We've got as many apartments coming, we've got 25% of all the apartments that we accumulated in 200 years, 9,500 units, and we got 2,200 approved in one year. So this is not shutting Mount Pleasant down for business. This is doing a proper stewardship measure of managing growth. And everywhere I go, people are begging us to please manage growth, and I ask my colleagues to please vote for this.
Order, please, we're working hard up here. Ms. Carroll?
Just a follow-up question to Mr. Haney. Are we talking about the impact fee study that Mr. Bustos requested? Or are we talking about what was presented tonight? Because you confused me there a minute. You know, I agree with Mr. Bustos in the impact study. I think it's well-needed, well-deserved. But you just kind of confused me a little bit, saying, you know, are we talking about that or are we talking about this?
This, to me, this coincides, this hits the pause button while, as I understand it, this hits the pause button while we get a handle on adjusting those impact fees. And we found out, was it last month or the month before last, Mr. Moore, that there's state law that affects that and a process that we have to go through. And in the meantime, I And in the meantime, I think there will be a mad rush to get permits and get in under the old fee structure before the new fee structure gets set. And I think, Mr. Carrier, pausing this right now gets a level playing field for the people of Mount Pleasant. So I didn't mean to merge the issues, but this is the pause and that's the study, and then this runs for 120 days, so hopefully those two will coincide.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Clarification, Mr. Haney. It is true that we identified it's 48%, but it's also true that we may never get to 100%. And so to have the conversation that we're going to get to 100% of impact fee, dollar for dollar, may never happen, and that's not due to anything that this body will choose to do or not do, but that is due to the body that sits in Columbia, South Carolina, just so that we're very clear. Some of that is way out of our control. So, Ms. Smith, did you have a comment?
I did. Couple of things. One, in trying to understand the growth level and anticipating the conversation tonight, I, as your water supply chairman, saw some information out from the waterworks. With all these building certificates of occupancies, no one moves in any dwelling unit typically without a water meter. So I felt that would be a good indicator as to helping understand the growth rates, which is an incredible report, I would add, Kristi Ann, that you send all of us monthly, which indicate the growth rates based on certificates of occupancy as well as the permits and many other things. This is leading up to the question that I have, Mr. Bustos, for helping me understand one of your points. The permit allocation was very successful. So I'm seeking clarification as to how, what are the benchmarks and indicators that you determined that the permit allocation was very successful? And I just would preface it with saying, considering this, the 20-year average growth rate in water meters, new water meters, from 1996 to this year was 4.43%. It's a 20-year run rate, average. The average growth rate during the permit allocation period, which for clarification purposes, correct me and mark me if I'm wrong, was 2001 to 2008, March of 2008. The new meter installation during that period was 4.36%. Here's where I really, really get confused. The new meter installation rate over the past five years, today backwards, five years, is 2.37%. I just need some help understanding how we define success so that we can learn from those previous experiences and build upon it.
Well, if you want to talk about the success of water meters, I think Clay Duffy sitting right there is the guy you need to talk to. But successes during the permit allocation program, if you go back during that time, which you're correct, start of 2001, it allowed us, it allowed us to build Hungy Net Boulevard to have another lateral route, and we built that with town, we didn't have to play "Mother May I" to any other governmental agency. The town of Mount Pleasant built that to help relieve traffic. Also, it gave enough breathing room for Wando High School to be completed, and when it was open, it was not at capacity, however it is at and overcapacity now. Just in those two things, I would say were great successes that the town did as a result, a direct result of permit allocation. It also gave us time to plan Johnny Dodd's Boulevard, which is now overwhelmed. So, yeah, there were several great successes. And, you know, I would say that the number of those water meters, of course, you also have annexations who were not new construction. You're talking, you're mixing construction and annexations and people putting in water meters for irrigation. So water meters, one house can have two water meters.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, you have floor.
So the permit allocation was interrupted in, I'm trying to remember, in March of 2008, when it was originally scheduled to run through 2010. Help me understand, why was it interrupted? Why did we disfend it?
Okay, the original permit allocation was supposed to have been for seven years, and that was from 2001 to 2008. Actually, it went to 2009, I believe, or 2010. The permit allocation was designed as a flexible plan. And as a flexible plan, as the demand for multifamily, I'll give you an example. Townhouses were in single-family numbers. But then it came to us that townhouses couldn't be built if they were issued, they were building a five-unit town, set of townhouses, and they were only issued three permits. So the builders came to us and said, "Can you move townhouses from single-family to multifamily?", which was done by the, by this council, or, you know, the town council, and then they were able to move ahead. So we had to adjust numbers there to give more numbers to multifamily for townhouses as opposed to single-family. And I don't know how that would affect the water meters, but...
Thank you, Joe. I mean, we could take those numbers, if you look at the growth rate, we can certainly take those numbers to units. The permit allocation program started at 7.03%. We're at 2.91%. The lowest that the permit allocation got it down to was in 2008 at 1.75. And of course, being a business owner in those days, I have to remind the audience that we had unemployment of 25% and 8.7 million jobs were lost in 2008. I think the market adjusted. Anyone else? Questions? Mr. Brimmer?
Kristi Ann, can you tell us just generally where those COs are coming, developments or parts of town, the COs are coming from mainly at this time?
Well, I know, I did look earlier today, just, I think it was permit issuance rather than COs that I was looking at, and about a quarter of the permits that we issued for June alone came from Carolina Park, if that helps.
It does.
But we have kind of looked at that. Oyster Point obviously had a lot over this past year, so that would be another kind of hotspot for permit issuance, obviously where you have multifamily complexes, that accounts for a number of dwelling units in one, you know, smaller, smaller area. Tupelo has had a number as well. Those have really probably been the biggest numbers that we've seen, at least over the past year.
Thank you. Question for either Marcy or Eric. One thing we haven't talked about yet that I'm concerned about is any impact this has on budget. I know our budget is heavily dependent on growth and development, so what, if any budget implications would like this have?
Well, sir, I don't have the exact numbers for you here, but it stands to reason that any revenue that we bring in from building permits would be reduced at some level. We've just begun the fiscal year, so we're planning with 11 months. You know, I can only speculate, but there would be some decrease on the building revenue side of things. But the building revenue side of things, it's fourth or fifth down the line in terms of most significant revenue sources.
Would there have to be any adjustments made in the spending for this year if this were to pass?
Yes. And we will bring that to you during the mid-year budget process in January.
Thank you. Couple other questions. So Carolina Park, we've already heard, would not be subject to a moratorium, if I understand Also, any of the large parcels in the county that are planning on developing, would they be subject to this moratorium?
Not if they're developed in the county.
And how long does our multifamily moratorium last at this point?
It was 180 days. Two months in, two more months.
Two or three more months.
That's all I have this time here.
Thank you. Kristi Ann, could you just remind us again what would happen to a property that chose not to annex and wanted to develop in the county? That's certainly something that could happen on all of these undeveloped parcels from 10 mile down.
Well, first of all, if they chose not to annex, they may not be able to get sewer and would have to develop on septic or some other means of waste management. If they were denied annexation by the town of Mount Pleasant, then they could potentially seek sewer service from Mount Pleasant Water Works.
So we could annex them and not offer them a permit, or we could choose not to annex them, and they could either build on septic. I do sit on a board at the COG, we just approved, and a fluid system where they spray the waste on the golf course?
That is, that had been something that had been, came up with Carolina Park many years ago when it was still in the county.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Mr. Morrison, you mind coming up and joining Ms. Farrell, please, for a minute? I wasn't on council, but I know Joe and Gary were in 2001 when you started the permit allocation system, and one of the biggest things that you worked on was to find out how to make sure it could withstand any legal test, and you tied it directly to infrastructure, roads, roads all over the town, and it proved to be successful, because I think you were tested twice, maybe three times. I'm not sharing lawsuits. So we're here today, and I understand that, and we always talk about infrastructure. And Mr. Haney, I hear you talk about Highway 41 being a level F. I get it. I hear it every month. I know it. Brian, let me ask you a couple of questions. Johnny Dodd's Boulevard, now that it's complete, for you, is there a grade for it now? It has, what, 55,000 cars a day on it?
Not quite that high. I think it's about low 40s. I haven't done any level of service analysis on it recently, but I expect...
When it was, let me just say this then. It was a certain grade that caused it to be moved to what it is now. So was there a projection that it's a C, it'll go to a B+, or you recall, I can't, I can't remember?
Oh, I mean, we had, we had failing level of service in mid-2000s before the project, if that's what you're asking, and, you know, when the project was finished, easily Cs, Ds. I expect they're probably about the same today at this point in time.
Right. And 17 North, the improvements there?
Probably the same. Once again, I, we haven't, you can look at daily volumes and as generalized level of service tables, we could certainly provide that information. We have the current counts from DOT, and say, here's my best guess at what the daily level of service is for these segments, but I expect it's in that range. There's portions of, obviously, of any facility during certain portions of the peak, or maybe majority of portions of the peak, segments might be failing. That's certainly the case for that segment of 41 from Joe Rouse to 17.
Right. I thank you for that. Joe, the reason I think you picked up on why I'm asking Brian these questions, you and I talked about this. I am, I'm not going to be in a position to support a town-wide moratorium on issuing permits, which leads to the allocation. But as I mentioned to you before, if we can find a way, and I know we can, to focus in on our greatest need of infrastructure, i.e. Highway 41, you get all my attention on how we can work to improve that infrastructure for that section. And I know it looks like I'm picking parts or sections of the town, but that doesn't bother me. I'm not phased by picking. There's areas that are great, that move with great transportation, there's areas that don't. We know where they are. So I just tell you that, to sit there, because I sit there tonight, and I realize this was coming, I found out over the weekend, I was out of town, that's okay. I've been around the block before. But I can't, I'm trying to figure all the ramifications of the legal issues of this. And that's not, you know me, I don't scream fire in a theater. I'm just thinking out loud about all this. So I'm uncomfortable with that. And I'm just uncomfortable with a town-wide movement. And I would be more interested in asking you to consider focusing on areas, such as the 41 corridor.
Well, you know, I think, and that may be a byproduct, that we have the moratorium, as I mentioned, for 120 days. At the end of that, in the permit allocation, maybe that is something staff can come up with. But right now, we need balance, and we're so weighted over here with houses and ADUs and apartments and resulting traffic and children in school, that we're almost completely out of balance, and we need to do something to bring that balance back, because what's at risk is our quality of life, and we have to balance this. And this is the only way, I believe, that we have. Now, as I said, as the staff puts this together and as the separate task forces come to their conclusions, I'm hoping something's going to come out of that that will, you know, give us more direction rather than less direction.
And again, for me, to help me, this is successful, this vote, the projects that are, we're getting ready to review. We still review them. They may get voted up, they may get voted down, but they're just in a holding pattern if they're approved.
For the permits?
For the permits.
Yeah. I mean, they, as I see this, there are things that are approved, and, you know, we can't do anything about that.
Right.
And tonight, you know, go through the approval process, and, but can they pull permits? I don't think so.
I got you.
For 120 days, and then if there's an allocation program, they'll get, you know, as you remember, every single homeowner or lot buyer who wanted a permit, right off the top, they get their permit, because they're looking for one. And then the tract builders that may be wanting to build 50, 100, would get some portion of those so that everyone gets something.
I just think about what's, I'm not sitting here looking to defend anybody that's got an application in tonight, they've simply just been following the rules. If I were them, obviously, I'd be, gee, I'd probably just need to pull this and see what happens. That's their decision.
Yeah, and, you know, does it take effect tomorrow morning? Well, after these things are approved or disapproved? You know, I don't know, when does, would it take effect tomorrow morning, or?
South Carolina Code requires that no moratorium may be imposed without at least two readings, which are a week apart. That's step number one. We also have an ordinance on moratorium, 156.032. A moratorium on development is justified in certain circumstances and can be implemented to prevent property owners from frustrating and/or circumventing the zoning process. That's the standard, and I think there is, you may want legal to review this, you may not, that's your call, but there are a lot of questions, I think, that we as staff are going to have as to what falls under this and what doesn't, because there, it is a very, very difficult subject to get our arms around as to what's included and what isn't as we sit here tonight, because we just haven't been able to provide that in advance. So that's, that's the law that applies right here.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Joe, the way I would look at it is if...
Yeah. Joe, the way I would look at it is if you have somebody here tonight with a second reading on a project, I would think that they would be, for lack of a better word, grandfathered in. They've gone through the system, they're here. I would say if they're, you know, in the pipeline now, they should be okay. And then we start fresh, you know, right after, right after whatever we have here in this meeting. Because they've been through all the work, they've done due diligence and all that. I would be okay with that. But then, like you said, right after that...
And I would agree. Yeah. I understand this is a big step. And it's a meaningful step. And picking when we have, we're sufficiently legally to do it, because we don't want to create a legal action. But then again, we know we have something that needs to be done to correct this imbalance.
Ms. Garch?
Yeah.
Are you fine, Ms. Santos? Ms. Garch?
And thank you, Mr. Paglioni, for your comments earlier. For my question, I'm not trying to single anybody out, but I got asked by some lifelong friends today, Beverly and Betsy are here, with their ward tract, which went through two readings of council. It went to the Planning Commission, they had questions. Now it's going back to the Planning Commission this month for plot approval. For example, if this is approved tonight, how does that impact their project? They would like to know that.
It shouldn't.
Mr. Paglioni?
What I understood, I heard, was that anything that had a vested thing. Build a permit vested right are two different things. So let's clarify that. What I thought I understood was if there was a vested right, then this would not apply. And so when I answered your question earlier, is there's a lot of ways to confer a vested right? That's what I understood.
If we're talking permits here, and like I said, people who have been through the process and have things approved, you know, we're going to be behind them. But we have to pick someplace. And I'm not trying to ambush any development that is right now in process. If it's in process, it's in process.
Yeah. And I don't, I don't think that. I really, I just, when they asked me earlier today, I said, gee, you know, I don't know. Because they're waiting on their plot approval. And then, once that happens, then they're going to be able to close. And then the developer's going to submit things and then just want to pull permits. I just...
I get it. But, you know, there's, you know, there's got to be a line drawn somewhere. I think they're clearly on the other side of the line. And I think tomorrow, if somebody walks in with a design, something they want, you know, they're, we're going to take that, we're going to look at it. But, you know, they're going to become part of the permanent allocation program.
Okay.
And I think Mr. Carrier makes a very good point, that staff will have to look at and see who's on the bubble and who isn't, and who's, and actually, there won't be anyone on the bubble. Those who are clearly in are in, those that have not are not.
Joe, I would ask a question. I know that you asked Mr. Bremer to put this on the Planning Committee agenda in July. And Mr. Bremer's doing a very, very good job at the Planning Committee to try to keep those meetings to two hours. Staff has no direction. And they didn't come prepared. I don't believe the answer to all the questions has arisen of this. I'm also very concerned about Mr. Paglioni's description, question 156.32, that says it's justified in certain circumstances. We don't know when, how, you're asking us to vote on something we're very willing to discuss, but that we don't know what we're voting on. And I don't know when Gary got his law degree, but I haven't gotten mine yet. And I can't make that decision. I would prefer you would take this back to Mr. Bremer and allow staff, Ms. Farrell, Mr. Morrison, Mr. Demora, and Mr. Paglioni, and Ms. Katta to give us some real data. What's the impact to this community? Meaning, what's the impact to the town's budget? What is the impact to everyone that sits in the community? This goes, we have had notice, we're having conversation. It's great conversation. We all realize that we're having a very valid discussion. No one's discounting your effort. But I am very frustrated to have to make a vote tonight, because I want to pick a side on this, Joe. I want to have meaningful, substantial conversation based on fact and data from the most qualified state of South Carolina employees, which are these guys with us today. So I would please ask you to consider taking this back, if Mr. Bremer is okay with that, as Chair of Planning.
Yes, let me say that Mr. Bustos did ask to have us on the July agenda. I agreed to put it on the agenda and then realized with our, the length of the agenda, that we were not probably going to have time. And I didn't want the public to show up at the meeting and not have time to discuss the items. So I did ask Joe if he'd be willing to put it on the August agenda. And he preferred to bring it here. So I'm happy to revisit it back in committee.
You know, this is something that has been discussed and discussed for almost time immemorial now. Again, it's like most of these things, we need, we know that there will be a second reading, and we know there can be amendments to anything by the second reading. So I think it's time to vote on this thing. And either we take the first step to manage growth meaningfully, or we don't. And I, you know, and I understand that Mr. Paglioni, between now and next month, may come down and say, jeez, there are a thousand reasons you can't do it. I understand that. But I think, rather than saying, we'll push it off, and push it off, and push it off, we need to go ahead and do it, and staff can start working on it, or not. If it fails, it fails. But I think, you know, at some point, we need to stop asking the residents of Mount Pleasant to sacrifice their quality of life. And they need to see that we are truly, truly doing something to positively impact their quality of life. That we are trying. I know people have said, aren't you too far down the road now to do anything? And I say, no. I say we can, we can do something, and this is the first step.
Thank you, Mr. Bustos. Mr. Allen, did you have another comment?
I know Mr. Owens was trying to speak.
Order, please.
He's been trying to speak for some time.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see Mr. Owens.
That's because he's in the way.
Mr. Owens, do you have a comment?
I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will tell you that I'm not a big fan of moratoriums. But I'll tell you, there comes a time where you have to exercise your right as a town to ensure that the citizens are well protected and that they can get around from point A to B in a timely fashion. I'm not sure, I'd be honest with you, 120 days, in my opinion, if you're really looking at doing something, it's going to be difficult to do it on 120 days. Because if you have a development, you have several permits outstanding. If you have a subdivision that's going in, it's going to take six, eight, 12 months for to start building vertically. And so, you know, so I'm not sure what we're trying to achieve here with 120 days, because it's going to be very difficult with what we have in the current pipeline, to try to mitigate it or minimize it to some degree. But if, with the 120 days, we can come back at a later date to increase that time, if needed. If we don't have the information that we're looking for currently, you know, then I think it's a worthwhile cause, at least to push the pause button, like Mr. Haney said, just to take a look at where we're going to, where we're going to be, provided it doesn't interfere with any ongoing development processes that are currently under review. That's my position. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I thank you for that. I do still have the concern that we are going against our own ordinance, number 156.32. Mr. Paglioni?
The moratorium ordinance, right, 156.032.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bremer?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. Or this one, I'm struggling on this one, for several different reasons. Mr. Bustos, I think, did a very, very good job of diagnosing the problem. In many ways, it's self-evident. But you, I think you verbalized it very well, but the problem is, I think we're all aware. Where I am struggling is not with the diagnosis, but with the treatment. Because moratoriums are the nuclear option here. And I'm not sure that we want to jump to that right now. I think there's a lot of questions, a lot of information that we just don't have. And perhaps a lot of unintended consequences of acting so quickly with a nuclear option. I'm concerned about the single, the property owner who wants to build a home or two on their property. We're kind of lumping them into the big developers in town with the same, we're not using a scalpel here. We're taking a broad approach across the town. And that concerns me, that we're not being more strategic in identifying the specific issues and putting strategies in place to deal with those, instead of just saying a one-size-fits-all for the whole town. That bothers me, I'll have to admit. I'm also concerned, because we always, you know, talk a lot about developers, you know, developers, developers. The development community in Mount Pleasant is more than the landowners. It is realtors who own businesses. They're business owners. You've got home improvement stores, and you've got professionals, electricians and plumbers, and a lot of people who make their living upbuilding. And I'm just concerned that we take an action here, that for many of these businesses who are just now recovering from the recession, we're going to come back to them and say, oh, by the way, we're going to put this on you now as well. I don't think it's necessary. And it concerns me that those folks are going to continue to struggle. And it's not just the big wealthy landowners here. We're talking about people who make their living, putting in carpet, painting walls, you know, all those sort of things. And so I'm just not sure that's the way to go. We have a comp plan. This board talks a lot about making sure that we follow the comp plan. And now what we're saying is, well, we won't even go further than the comp plan. I don't think we give the public... Well, I'll hold up on that. I think right now, we have the best tool at our disposal. I think the best tool we have at our disposal now is our vote. Now, we've got some items tonight that are going to ask for a vote for rezonings or add lots. The best way we can control building is by our individual votes on projects. And if it's a project not good in the town, we need not be supporting those. But we have kind of a mixed, kind of a mixed record on that. Sometimes we approve upzoning, sometimes we don't. So I just, I guess the upshot of my comments is, well, and the other piece is, I think this is not really going to impact where the problem is, Carolina Park, and the large parcels outside the county, or outside the town. Those will continue to develop, continue to be built. And this is not really going to impact where that, where that problem is. So I would prefer, honestly, and this is a great discussion tonight, by the way, but I prefer to go back to a committee or a group to take a closer look at this, so that we can have some conversation with the people who are most affected by this. You know, I got a call today from some folks in the home building business who said, you know, we understand the problem. And we want to be part of the solution here, but we haven't been invited into the conversation. So we're going to take actions that are going to impact businesses significantly, I think, without asking how they can be part of the solution. That, to me, is inclusive. That, to me, is a balanced approach. We've already taken action on moratoriums. We have a moratorium on multifamily at this point, which is in effect, and possibly could be extended. So to me, the solution here is two parts. Part of it is dealing with the amount of building going on. But the other part of the solution is infrastructure. Could we be doing more to fix some of the infrastructure? I mean, we got a request tonight to consider spending considerable dollars on a recreation field, when that money could be going for transportation projects or other mitigation in our, in our infrastructure. So what is our priority? What is our commitment to infrastructure development? Because it can't be just about slowing and stopping growth. It's got to be both. It's got to be balanced with putting the town resources in place so that the infrastructure can grow. Because we're not going to see a decrease in growth. I mean, I get it. Back when the initial moratorium was put on, put in place, and permit allocation was put in place, we had a growth rate of 13.74 percent. That, to me, needs a nuclear option. It needed it. And I was living in the north part of town, and it was insane during those years. So to put permit allocation in place at that time was absolutely appropriate, in my view. Because it was out of control. We couldn't get the school district to the table to build schools. It just was a mess. You look at the last three years of dwelling units in Mount Pleasant, it's on a downward slope, from 1,200 now, just over 1,000. So growth is slowing. We're still growing, but we're slowing. You know, we're at low single digits. So to me, what that tells me is, we don't need the nuclear option at this point. But we need to be more strategic in saying, where are the biggest issues? And what can we do to have the biggest impact on those particular issues? And by putting a moratorium in place right now, I think that just sends a message that we're kind of going back and forth, not sure what to do. And I would rather us keep it the way it is for now, have some study, maybe in conjunction with the task force that are in place, and pull all these together at the same time with all the data that we need, and say, now that we have the data we need, we've taken time to study it. Now let's put something reasonable in place that achieves our goal. But this seems to me to be kind of a knee-jerk reaction. And honestly, I haven't had any conversation to this point regarding this. I came in here tonight sort of wanting information. And I feel very uncomfortable trying to support a motion where I've had an hour of conversation. And that's just, I like to, I like to take things in and consider them and get the information I need. And I don't feel like I've had a chance to really do that successfully. I applaud your efforts. I absolutely want to do something. But I think this is just too much to quit. So those are, those are my comments.
Thank you. I have Mr. Owens first. Mr. Owens, you have a floor?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to follow up what Mr. Bremer was talking about as far as the comprehensive plan. I think that the great detail has gone to the comprehensive plan, and we have turned a blind eye to it more times than I care to admit. But I would like for this council in the future to consider, seriously consider maintaining the comp plan. We have, we have resources at our availability, such as the comp plan. We also have the ability to rezone. This council has the authority to rezone property. If it's high density, we can reduce it. We have that authority, and we don't exercise it. I think we need to spend more time exercising that as well. I think that we have, also have an opportunity to mitigate some of the growth that we have incurred in the last 10 years. And it's really come to the forefront of the residents. But, you know, I'm not sure what we're going to achieve by, I have a problem with the four months. I just can't, I don't know that, you know, I guess we can extend it after that period of time. But I think we need to use our growth management plan. We have a tool in place, and we don't exercise that either. We don't include other options in the growth management plan that we share. Adding a permit allocation to that toolbox so that we can use it in the event that it's needed, and we don't. I'd like to have a conversation about increasing the resources in the growth management plan as well. Those are other conversations I think this body needs. So there are tools available to us, and we don't utilize them enough. And, you know, I wish that, that, you know, it might be a good idea, it might be a good idea to go back to the Planning Committee. And make it, the Planning Committee, and have the dialogue and be sure legally that we stand on firm ground. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes, I have one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would like to address, and Councilman Bremer, you mentioned, and Mayor Page, that just to compare growth rates is blind. If this room had a 200-person capacity, when there's five people in the room, if people are coming in 20, 30 at a time, it's okay. But as you get close to the capacity of the room, you have to slow it down. And one of our town people sent me an email and said, imagine you're holding a cup of coffee and you're pouring hot coffee in it. Well, when you're filling up the bottom, or you're filling up to the half, you can pour it pretty fast. But when you get to the top, and you're going to burn your fingers when it overflows, you better slow it down a little bit. So to compare a growth rate from 16 years ago to now is a very different thing. And the other thing I want to say is, one of the things, and I will say in South Carolina, is the first thing you do when you find yourself in a hole is you stop digging. And if you're commuting down Highway 41 to get to, like, Jenny Moore School, where my wife teaches, if you're in Rivertown, you're going that way, don't tell me that those folks don't feel like we're in a hole. I know, because we talk to them. And if you're trying to get home on the $85 million Johnny Dods that we just widened, that now, Brad, where's Brad, is grading a C or a D already after $85 million? I think we're in a hole. I think we're in a hole and I think we need to stop digging. And, and just to compare growth rates, you got to look at where we are towards capacity.
You bring up a great point, Mr. Haney. And Mr. Brimmer and I have done a lot to have that conversation. We are engaging, there's a big part of the equation you're not even talking about here. Bob and I are kind of two steps ahead of you on that and on those tools, Jim, because the reality is, we have people from Ten Mile and Ondal in this audience. Ms. Jenkins, Mr. Askew, I see them still sitting here. They have properties, they want to come into town, they want to sell their properties. We are going to pass an annexation tonight of Bull Bay. That's at Ondal, folks. Clay Duffy sits here, represents our water and understands how important, you know, we got to talk about Paradise Island and Woodville and Cat Island and where is capacity? And that's the proper conversation to have. And I love that the direction that this is going in is the end in sight, not the, not the south side of town, not the north side of town. But then Mr. Demora has to give us a lot of data, guys. We can't just continue to annex. Pete Timothy came to my office and I told Timothy, I can't support your project at Ten Mile. Not that I'm against his project at Ten Mile, the one he wants me to support. What I'm against is it's one little development. We do it over and over again. Let's pick one little development, let's not have a master plan. Let's not talk about, what I ask you about, Timothy, I ask you about the grocery stores. Where are you going to put a grocery store? If Ten Mile develops at four units to the acre, that's the highest density. Joe, you supported four units an acre touching the urban growth line. And that's fine if that's our direction. But the fire chief sitting over there and Mr. Grag sitting over there and Jody Peel sitting over there needs to know where the lay-down yard is going to be, how much, many more trash comp factors, how many more trash trucks, how many more policemen? And, and we don't have that line. And then we have Four Mile community that's undeveloped, we have Snowden, we have a lot of redevelopment. So this is a great conversation. It's not big enough, it's not large enough. We need to engage it. And you're right, we need to sharpen our tools. You know, I don't think we're in a hole at 2.7, but that's my perspective. And we can choose to have different perspectives, but let's choose to govern the hole and let's define what the hole is instead of individually. So can we call for the vote? Yes.
I have one more thing. I think it's a little disingenuous what you're saying. These people live in this crowded town that we have now and you're throwing, Joe, we need time, we have time, we can stroke this guy, we can stroke that guy, it's time for action. And, and this isn't something that has just arrived. You know, y'all gave us Earl's Court, y'all gave us Boulevard, you gave us a lot of things, the rezonings of Carolina Park from industrial, white industrial and commercial to residential. Mayor Swales and yourself nailed the nail down on traffic and crowding in the schools. Now, we need to vote on this. That's right, go vote. And if it passes between now and second reading, all those things you want to happen can happen, no problem. If it's voted down, then you have to wear the fact that you are asking the townspeople of this town to be crowded, to have their children in crowded classrooms, to have, to be in traffic, to run the risk of an evacuation, that they won't be able to get out of this town because we set astride the, the roads that Ondal, Isle of Palms and Sullivan's Island will all pass through. And yet we and you are saying, I'm okay with more people, I'm okay with more building, I'm okay with more traffic, because that's exactly what you're saying. And, you know, that, that's fine. That's how this organization works. We'll vote on it and then, like I say, just wear it.
Joe, I will wear it, but you have to wear it as well, because we have Oyster Park because of you, you were chairman of planning committee, and I did a change to vote for economic development of a residential. I welcome economic development. Check my record. Not here to fight with you, love the conversation and glad that we are having it. And I think if there's no more comments, we can call for the vote.
Mr. Brimmer?
No.
Mr. Brimmer votes no. Mr. Bustos?
Aye.
Mr. Bustos votes yes. Mr. Carrier?
No.
Mr. Carrier votes no. Mr. Garch?
No.
Mr. Garch votes no. Mr. Haney?
Aye.
Mr. Haney votes yes. Mr. Owens?
Aye.
Mr. Owens votes yes. Mr. Santos?
Aye.
Mr. Santos votes yes. Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Smith votes no. Mayor Page?
No. Motion fails. I ask you to take a five-minute break. Five-minute break, Doug.
Second.
Have a motion of second for approval. Any questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the ayes opposed and the ayes have.
This is a one.
Yeah. Moving on to that, I'm sorry, what do you got, David? What do you need? Oh, he's counting to make sure we have four. We have four. Yeah, we actually, we have four.
That was first reading, orders number 16041. The order is providing the annexation of approximately 4.49 acre tract of land comprised of three parcels located on Old Georgetown Road. Then, the TMS number is 578-000007, 578-000011, and 578-000014. And depicted on the platte recorded by Charleston County Office and Book CB, page 61, pages 15, page 6.
Thank you. Item number two, which is now number three, is the first reading of the zoning request on that same tract, Ms. Farrell?
Yes. The request is to zone R4 and to not be included in the Sweetgrass Basket overlay district with coverage of plan recommended to community conservation for this property, which should travel to the city at 3 acres. There is not a request to amend the comprehensive plan. There are a lot of quote comments though, provided by staff with respect to coverage of the plan goals, where we do recognize anticipation is a goal, but also the preservation of character within the key conservation areas and also coordination of materials to be handy. As a matter of comparison and information, the requested zoning would allow 4,000 square foot lots as compared to the automatic zoning on the property, which would be community conservation, which would be 12,500 square foot lots. The planning commission reviewed this application and at their meeting, they recommended approval of the R4 zoning, but they recommended denial of the request to not be included in this Sweetgrass Basket overlay district. I'm going to have to provide further explanation on that. But to complete the review of the recommendations, the planning committee recommended approval of the R4 zoning and they did not make a recommendation regarding the removal or inclusion of the Sweetgrass Basket overlay district. The reason that this is important is because the Sweetgrass Basket is an overlay district, so it would supersede the underlying, the standards of the underlying district. So in this case, even though if the commission recommendation were to move forward, for example, even though the R4 zoning is underneath, which allows 4,000 square foot lots, the overlay would supersede and the 12,500 square foot lots would be required as well as any other standards associated with the community conservation zoning. There may be some questions, if there are some questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
Just to clarify for council, as written right now, it says R4 and removal from the overlay. That's how it's written right now.
That's the recommendation that came out of the planning committee, not the planning commission?
What's the... Committee did not make a recommendation regarding the Sweetgrass District.
Okay. What's the, what's the...
Can you pull the diagram up again, please? Previous slide, the one before that with the, there. Don't we have a sister development that's, we just looked at not that long ago?
There's a, there's a number of things going on in the Old Georgetown area. There is, there's development approved here just off of Six Mile, but the Fulton track is further, just, it's off the screen. It is a conservation design plan development and it's just a little bit further on that, going more towards the Boone Hall.
I thought something was in that diamond track right beneath the ponds.
Uh, right here?
Up, though, up to the left, there.
That's the church.
That's the church?
Yes, sir.
Church property.
Okay.
What's the favor of the committee?
I would like to move for approval of the R4 zoning. And is it okay in this motion? I'm not sure, because it didn't come clean out of the committee to also remove it from the overlay district.
And again, Kristi, and that's how the current version was written, removal from the overlay district.
Say.
Is that correct? I'm sorry, Kristi Ann.
No, I'm reading it.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we have that right, because if not, it would require an amendment.
That's why I'm asking.
It does not make a reference to the overlay district, it simply references the R4.
So I just made it so.
So this would be consistent with the planning commission's recommendation.
Right. It's just the planning commission, so right now it's a motion for approval and if you wanted to amend anything at final reading, you could do that.
Okay. Did I hear a second?
Yes, you did.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion of second. I have several speakers lined up. Is there any questions from the council first for Ms. Farrell?
Just...
Yes.
What was the vote of the planning commission? Kristi Ann, do you have that?
So it was, planning commission recommended approval of the R4 zoning, but denied the request to be removed from the Sweetgrass District by a vote of six to two.
Thank you.
We'll call speakers.
Charlotte Jenkins.
Mr. Jefferson, do you choose to speak? You know the drill.
Yeah. Been a minute sitting there, I actually remember.
Yes, sir. We don't start it till you start talking.
Louis Jefferson, I'm at 1128 McNight Road. And I was hoping that I could go and record and welcome this project coming into our area. Our community, we're, we're concerned about the guidelines of the comp plan, that it be enforced, and the requirement of the zoning district as it was presented by committee. And we're hoping that somehow you all can find a mechanism to make this project work in our community without compromising any set rules or laws that governs your decision. Thank you.
Ms. Jenkins, you're up.
We're final on the Ten Mile track, that's fine. I know. I spoke earlier, but this is the Seven Mile. I can speak on that again?
Well, we have you signed up, but if you would choose to hold your comments to Ten Mile, we will, yeah, that'd be fine.
Russ Seaman, 501 Wando Park Boulevard, Mount Pleasant. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just want to give you a little bit of history of this project and while we're here. The comp plan does recommend for community conservation and we're not asking to change that. The original plan that we wanted to do when we first started this was a PD-CD, which is allowable under the, under the comp plan designation. We met with the town and the town expressed a, you can, the town expressed a desire to make a connection, which is called the Long Point Extension, that would impact our property. And so with that in mind, we went back to the drawing board and we came back with a different request that would allow that to happen. And so what we are proposing is actually shrinking our development footprint to allow for, it's 1.8 acres and an 80-foot right-of-way coming through the property. We realized that if we did this and we took this acreage out of our property, that we could no longer get the unit count that we would have been able to get under the PD-CD. So it was going to hurt us in order to give this land to the town and make it a good traffic connection for the town. So that's why we came here with the R4 request instead of the PD-CD. Then it gets a little more complicated that we would still be under the Sweetgrass Basket overlay, which doesn't give you the flexibility in lot sizes that the PD-CD does. So it was going to do the same thing where we couldn't get what we otherwise would have been able to under the PD-CD and still give the land to the town. So that's why we're here asking for what we're asking. We, we feel like it's very much a win-win. We're not, we're actually getting two lots less than we could conceptually by studying these with our PD-CD versus the R4 layout that you see. And like I said, 1.8 acres to the town, we feel like it's going to help create an important traffic connection. And I know there was a lot of talk about infrastructure and dispersing traffic and I think this is an important connection. And, you know, otherwise, if we came back to you with the PD-CD that didn't contemplate this connection, the town would have to condemn the road, which is a very complicated process, and also have to pay for the land that the developer is willing to donate. Lastly, the community has been very much in support of our proposal. And I'm here for questions.
Thank you. Question for Mr. Haney?
Thank you. What guarantee do we have that the developer will follow through and gift that land to the town?
I don't know if through the zoning, there is a way to, to do that. The developer has given their word and they've talked with the town about the property and we would have to come back for sketch plan and for preliminary platte. So there are future approvals through the town that we would have to go through.
Okay, so I guess my question, and it's technical, would be if we, if we approved this, is, is it conditional to the fact that they follow through and give us that? So, so we could be approving this thinking we're getting that, but, but they don't have to, right?
Mr. Haney, we can't condition annexation or zoning.
They, exactly. So they could sell it to a subsequent developer or whatever who says, no, I didn't make that deal and I'm not required to do it. Is, is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Seaman?
Well, I don't have a question. I just had to state, and I know me and you talked earlier, the Sweetgrass Basket overlay district, you know, it's, it's, we did that for a reason, we came here for a reason. And, and just like the comp plan, it seemed to be, being chipped away at constantly and, you know, I, I don't want to see the Sweetgrass Basket overlay district disappear. And that's what's ended up happening. We had it recently on Hungry Neck Boulevard and I voted against it because of that reason, that, that development. And, and I appreciate you guys coming up and the hard work y'all did, but I'm just not, I'm just not ready to, to do away with the Sweetgrass Basket overlay district. I think it's very important, it's part of our culture, and if we keep chipping away at it, there won't be any left. And so I'll be voting against it just for that reason.
Thank you, Mr. Santos. Any other questions? We have a motion of second.
The motion is to approve the... And as written, again, it's the way the ordinance is written now, it's to zone R4 and there's no mention currently in the ordinance of removal from the overlay district.
It has to be amended at second.
It has to be amended, yes, sir.
Call for the vote.
So do we have an amended second?
No, we don't. We, we don't need to amend it, we will amend it before Senate reading.
Got you.
Mr. Brimmer?
No.
Mr. Brimmer votes no. Mr. Bustos?
No.
Mr. Bustos votes no. Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier votes yes. Mr. Garch?
Aye.
Mr. Garch votes yes. Mr. Haney?
No.
Mr. Haney votes no. Mr. Owens?
No.
Mr. Owens votes no. Mr. Santos?
No.
Mr. Santos votes no. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith votes yes. Mayor Page?
No.
Mayor Page votes no.
Motion fails. Item number three is a first reading of a piece of property that, and this request has been deferred, but we still have several people trying to speak, so we do want to address the issue and then...
You do have, you've received a request at first, obviously of the town council to grant that or not.
Right.
But they have requested to defer until next month. The, to review very quickly what the request in front of you today is... To review very quickly what the request in front of you today is, this property is located on Spike Street, it's not showing up that well, but located on Spike Street right here, this tract of land, which is about 28,000 square feet. The request is to zone it from R1 to R2 with, of course, the intention being for potential subdivision of that piece of property. This was the planning commission where it was recommended for denial by a vote of six to two and the planning committee recommended denial by a vote of two to one.
Motion to deny?
No, they're asking for a defer. Oh, you can make, so we're going to make a motion to deny and then we have a second on that? Okay. So we have a motion and a second on denial. Any questions? Do you work where we are? If I know we have speakers tied up. Any questions from council, I was asking first, if there's anyone in council who can speak. All right, we'll have the speakers, please.
Elizabeth Hodges?
She left.
Okay. See, Barry Wolf, maybe you left as well. Barbara Smith?
Good evening. How was there at this meeting? I'm Barbara Smith, 410 Royal Avenue, and I'm here in regards to 520 Spike Street and their rezoning request, and I ask you not to defer this. As I said in the last two planning meetings, I want to thank the Deer Track people who had foresight 29 years ago to change their area to R1 and keep any more subdividing of the lots. Changing a 520 Spike Street zoning from R1 to R2 now will set a wrong precedent. It is the right thing to keep the R1 zoning. Please deny this rezoning as you denied the rezoning of Reed and Royal in 2013. Nothing has changed since then to warrant this change now. During the planning committee on Tuesday, there was discussion about the Old Village. And I know 520 Spike Street is not in the Old Village as such, but it's two lots away. And a councilman said in that meeting, the Old Village is something that our town wants to protect and preserve because this is a special area. Well, the Deer Track is special too. The owners have bought into this R1 neighborhood in good faith, so please show them that you will continue to protect them and this zoning. It was also asked at this meeting why there were two asphalt driveways. Well, I can tell you, at 534 Spikes, there were two asphalt driveways. It was a round, a driveway that was circular and they had done away with that and they still have a little bit of the asphalt left. I'm asking that you not approve what I consider spot zoning within the Deer Track. This will not only change the density, but it will change the character of this older part of town. This rezoning is not about ADUs, it's not about making two, but it is about making two long narrow lots that do not meet the two and a half times the width to depth. A deed restriction on this property to not allow ADUs would not carry over to any other lots that ask for rezoning. It would also not restrict them to build two detached garages and then there would be four structures on that property anyway. So please let the entire community and the more than 105 people who signed a petition to deny this.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Yes, that was presented and helped us keep our care.
We got the gist.
Susan Duffy?
Hey, Lucy. Lucy Maxwell, 642 Royal Avenue. My home is located on the corner of Royal and Spike Street, adjacent to Downstairs property. And Clay has agreed to read my statement.
Dear council members, I'm writing regarding the rezoning of application of 520 Spike Street. I ask that council deny this request. My primary reason is that changing the zoning from R1 to R2 would significantly impact the beauty and tradition of the homes in the village. I live in a historic home which was built during the Civil War. I have already tried to make my wishes known previously, previous property developments, but it seems that every year or two, villagers or developers with no real ties to the village oppose changes to our environment with no real sympathy or understanding of the local residents. It is extremely sad to me to see my home and my friends' homes being a sale by individuals who seem only to want to make more money. Please, as a council, you are the only hope that we have to help preserve the traditions of the village. It is for this reason that I plead with the committee, council, to deny the change in the zoning aforementioned. Please support the people who have been residents for years by keeping our neighborhoods on as R1. Sincerely, Lucy Maxwell.
Thank you, Lucy. Matt, on Clay, thank you.
Thank you. If I may, Madam Mayor, take one comment relative to the discussion about the moratorium. As general manager of Mount Pleasant Water Works, I'd like to add that I think our commission would love to join the conversation about controlling growth and managing the infrastructure for the future of our town. We want to be in lockstep with this council, so I know it's going to take a lot of discussion in order to get there, and we are ready to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. So we have a motion and a second for denial, not deferral. Just to clarify, I will be recusing from this vote. I am a neighbor of Mr. Deere's. So any thought that I may financially benefit one way or another will take me out of this vote. So we have a motion for denial. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And it's denied unanimously. Moving on to the annexation of, it's under, it's number five, it's on the agenda as number four, the Barton Track and the Nelson Track. Mr. Almaz?
Yes. The next three items on your agenda all pertain to this particular tract of land. So first you have in front of you the annexation request. It's a 16.25 acre tract of land. It is comprised of three parcels and a portion of the fourth. The planning committee has recommended approval of annexation. I'll be glad they move on or...
Let's take them one at a time. We have a motion and a second for annexation. Any questions? Mr. Haney?
Yeah, can you tell us a little bit about this? I think I'm familiar with it from attending the planning, I just want to make sure.
Some of the zoning comp plan aspect of it, is that what you're asking?
What is, what is planned for this track?
The request that you have is to amend the comprehensive plan, that's the next item on your agenda, for low density. It's currently shown as rural conservation on the map, so the request is for low density. And then in addition, there's a rezoning request for R4.
Got it. I was thinking that was it.
But this is just strictly the annexation, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Who's a no to annexation?
First reading orders, number 16052, orders providing for the annexation of 16.25 acre tract comprised of three parcels, Barton Track, and a portion of the fourth parcel, Nelson Track, located at 3864, 3866, US 17 North.
Thank you very much. And number six, which is on the agenda as number five, is the same piece of property. This is the ordinance to amend the comprehensive plan?
Yes. So this was, we had a public hearing earlier this evening on the request to amend the comprehensive plan. And as noted just a second ago, the land use recommendation at this point in time is rural conservation, which provides for a density of one unit per every three acres. It does allow for the ability to cluster development in order to maximize density at one unit per one acre. That's the current comprehensive plan. The request is for low-density neighborhood land use designation, and that would change the density of approved to three units per one acre. Also, as a matter of information, there was a lot of discussion at both the planning commission as well as the planning committee. This property is located beyond the urban growth boundary line, thus the reason for the rural conservation.
Motion to deny.
Land use.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for denial. Any questions? Comments? Mr. Carrier?
I'm just curious because I, and I did ask Councilman Bustos and Councilman Smith as to why they voted the way they did in the, in the committee meeting to not do the comprehensive plan. And can we, can we get that explanation? Because I am still curious. You're answered, you were the only one that answered me, Mr. Bustos, so.
Yeah. I just. I thought there was something, there may be something good in this, but, you know, rather than approve it, bring it into the town and manage it with permit application, as Mr. Brimmer said, we'll just vote against it.
Thank you. Elton, did you say that I responded to my email that I did? You said that, right? Yes, I just didn't get an answer. I mean. Very good. So why did I vote the way I voted in planning committee is your question. I wanted us to get to this point to have a discussion. I think that there's, there's merit to this project and I think we're pretty close to getting something down that I would be comfortable with. Thanks.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second for denial. All in favor of denial?
Aye.
Opposed? And the, it's have it. It's denied. Item number seven is that same piece of property, so I suppose.
It's, yes, ma'am. The next item on the agenda is the zoning request associated with this, and the zoning request is for R4.
Motion to deny.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for denial. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the ayes have it. Item number eight, which is seven on the agenda, is an ordinance to amend the various portions of the chapter 156 of Code of Ordinances pertaining to unexpired...
First reading. Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second for first reading. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the ayes have it.
First reading orders, number 16055, orders to amend various portions of chapter 156 of Mount Pleasant Code of Ordinances pertaining to filling unexpired terms for members on certain boards and commissions.
Thank you. Item number nine, which is eight on the agenda, is an ordinance for an annexation of two tracts of land located at Bull's Bay Boulevard.
Who for approval?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Two noes?
You had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
That's all right.
I apologize.
I was going to ask if this was successful, would this be our further snowing point?
I'm sorry. Wando Farms.
That's right, the Okiwi Farm. But it would be on this side?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Did you say with the noes?
I have two questions. Who was the second? I heard several.
Mm-hmm.
I was the...
No. The second to the motion.
Mr. Haney?
I second that.
Oh, you were the second, okay.
Owen's second.
All right. And we have two opposed.
For Mr. Haney and Mr. Bustos.
Thank you.
First reading orders, number 16056, orders providing for the annexation of two tracts of land located on US Highway 17 North, south of the intersection of Bull's Bay Boulevard, along with four tracts of land comprised of Bull's Bay Golf Club, 42 house lots, HOA property, and residential future development property therein.
Thank you. Before we move to item number 10, well, I can introduce the item. It's the request for the extension of the vesting period for the impact assessment for Boulevard Phase Two. I need some legal clarification from Mr. Pagliari on our ordinance number 156.049B, which is that council must approve applications for extensions to the vested right of private land.
That's right. That's what the ordinance says.
So, just for clarification, can you explain that, Mr. Pagliari?
Right, as long as, you know, as long as there's a request, unless there's something in our development rules that have changed, which would prevent the vesting from happening, then, then our ordinances direct us to approve these. That's the purpose of the ordinance. We don't know of any changes in our development regulations that would prevent any vesting.
Yes, sir.
Do we know why they're asking for an extension?
No, I don't.
Well, we don't, there was nothing specified. However, as you may be aware, our legislative, state legislature acted several years ago to extend certain vesting periods. As of right now, there is some confusion at the state level, different municipalities are handling this different ways. This particular landowner reads it so that they need to request the extension at this point. So it's their request, it's not anything brought up by our staff.
I guess my question is, if their request on the extension is because they can't comply with our ordinance? I mean, do we know? We don't even know.
I don't think that has anything to do with it. I think they're just requesting the extension of their vested right.
Okay. It's just unusual. I've been here a long time, I haven't seen that often.
Well, and I think, right, as you're aware, our state legislature has acted on this issue. They've extended certain vested rights. I do think there's a question right now that all of staff, all the municipalities in South Carolina are dealing with when these vested rights expire. This particular landowner has elected to request that extension as is their right by ordinance and state statute.
You may begin to see this a little bit more in the future. The state enacted a suspension of extended, of vested rights for a period of time, and that time is rolling to an end, this suspension. So what you'll see going forward is, if you, for example, had an impact assessment on the agenda this evening that you approved, it would only be vested for two years. Then they would, and if they didn't build it, they would have to come back and do exactly what's happening here and put in a request for an extension if they still intended to build it. So you will see this more. You made the comment that you hadn't seen this. It's because there's been a suspension for quite some time for the state.
Mr. Bustos?
What is the practical effect of voting no to this? If a majority voted no?
Well, I think first, there would have to be some analysis as to what Kristi Ann just mentioned, the state suspension of these issues, whether there still is a vested right. That would have to be the first question analyzed, and then I would imagine a landowner, if there is no vested right, then the landowner could petition either this body or the courts to affirm it.
And if they lose their vested right, do they have to come and reapply?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay. Got it. So I guess my question would be, have they, have they filed anything with the town yet that might make a snake their vested?
Well, they haven't approved.
It's purged.
Right.
It's vested.
It's already been approved and they're simply asking for the time period to construct or to take action on that vested right. Typically vested rights expire after a period of time if you don't take action, and they're requesting to extend that period of time.
And then as a matter of information, they have applied to the design review board. They actually went for preliminary approval last month, which does not vest them, but once they receive final approval, it will vest the project. So they appear to be proceeding with it, but as Mr. Pagliari has indicated, the impact assessment is what they are requesting the extension for until they, I guess, get their DRB approval.
My only question is, I worry a little bit about it, you know, the development at the Milo Shopping Center, they waited so long before they finally built it, and now it's, you know, humongous and it's, you know, causing a lot of impact on that road. And I just worry about them putting this off and putting this off and doing kind of the same thing as they did with, you know, that development on the corner of Ben Sawyer and, you know, Rifle Range Road. So how long are they allowed to keep putting this off? Do we know?
Well, to, to respond first to the one on Rifle Range, the Oyster Park Development, it was definitely, fell in that window of that suspension where the state suspended the vested rights for a period of...
Seven years.
Yes. And so they, they had the ability to do that. What will happen with the Boulevard is now that that suspension is coming to an end, it comes to an end at the end of this year, December 31st, 2016, they will only have a two-year window to act, to proceed with pulling their building permit before their vesting would be considered expired, unless what they're doing today is requesting an extension. And they are allowed to request, per the state, they are allowed to request annual extensions five times. So they, but they have to, the onus is on them. They have, they have to put in the request. So we're not here to remind them that they're, they're coming to an end, but if they put it in, then yes, it has the potential to be vested for seven years. Anything, whether it's a DRB project or a council project or even something in the Old Village, anything of that nature.
I have two people over here. Mr. Carey, are you okay then?
I'm fine.
Mr. Brimmer?
Just so I'm clear, Mr. Pagliarini, is it my understanding the town's position is at this point in order for us to be in compliance with state law and our ordinance, we sort of have an obligation to approve this?
That's what the state statute directs us to do unless there's been, unless there's something in our development regulations that would prevent them from doing what they want to do. I don't know necessarily what that is, but there would have to be a development regulation change that we would have to base our denial of a vested right on.
And at this point, the town's position is, we don't, we're not aware of any changes that have taken place that would meet that criteria?
We have reviewed and discussed among staff, we don't have anything specific or even general that we could point to that would, in our opinion, fit that.
And one last question.
It's not, you don't have, Mr. Haney, you don't have floor yet. I will recognize you. Mr. Brimmer?
Yeah, just one last question. So what may be, what possible legal implications would there be if we deny without having a basis for denial under the law?
Well, certainly any landowner, if they believe that the denial is improper, could ask a court to change, to grant them their vested right.
Thank you.
Mr. Owens?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just off the cuff, are we certain that the expiration period hasn't lapsed?
She just stated it was till December of this year.
December of this year.
Well, that was for that, but no, with respect to when their impact assessment was originally approved, they did submit the letter to the town within, to the date, I mean, not to the date, but to the month. Yes, for the two years.
Mr. Haney, would you like to ask a question?
Thank you. Yes, my question is, we have passed a apartment moratorium since all of this and my question is what bearing might that have as a justification for the no vote?
Yeah, I don't think there's any permit requests and this is just a vested right extension, so I think those are separate. The question is to if and what they wanted to develop it and reform with it, whether they could under the moratorium, but the question here is simply an extension of the vested right.
To the motion in the second, we should approve. I have a motion in second to approve. I want to make sure.
Let me make sure. No, I don't, I don't see that we have a motion.
Okay, we have no motion at this time.
Move for approval.
I have a motion to approve, do I have a second? I'll second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Count the noes, please. Where's your hand? You have six.
Mr.? Is Mr. everybody, yes, or no?
Let me guess.
We have six. Are you good?
Here, I'll stand here, isn't that?
Bob and Paul.
John Ringo.
All right. Motion fails. Moving into old business, number one is the final reading of an ordinance to am.
Move for final reading.
I have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I'm sorry, it was the no.
Final reading orders number 16040, an order to zone R3, medium density residential district, approximately 0.164 acre tract of land comprised of a portion of one parcel and a portion of the right-of-way located on Andy Law Lane identified by TMS number 558000355, a portion thereof depicted in a flat recorded by the Charleston County RMC office and booked CK, page 91.
Before, that developer that just walked out to clean up that piece of property told me that they took out 30 tons.
Tons, yeah.
30 tons of garbage.
Garbage.
Of that property.
Andy Law Lane.
30 tons.
None of them.
Just wanted to comment that sometimes developers do good things. Item number two is a final reading of an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances pertaining to.
Move for final reading.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One, no.
Final reading orders number 16043, an order to amend chapter 156 of the Mount Pleasant Code of Ordinances, section 156-07, 156, 156-325, and 156-326 pertaining to mobile retail vendors.
Item number three is an ordinance relating to the overlay districts and setbacks.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion in second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the ayes have it.
Final reading orders number 16044, an order to amend zoning code sections 156.111, location of accessory uses, the 156.315, special R2 overlay district of chapter 156 of the Mount Pleasant Code of Ordinances pertaining to allowable setbacks for accessory structures.
Item number four is a final reading of an annexation of a piece of property in Darryl Creek Plantation.
Move for approval.
I have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the ayes have it.
Final reading orders number 16045, an order to provide for the annexation of approximately 0.47 acre tract of land located at 3705 River Station Court in Darryl Creek Plantation, formerly known as River Station, identified by TMS number 5960800051, known as block 49, block 8, depicted in a flat recorded by the Charleston County RMC office and booked VA, page 87.
Five is another single-family annexation in Darryl Creek Plantation.
Move for final reading.
Five and six?
Well, I don't know, what's your motion, Paul?
I move for approval of final reading, five and six.
Second.
I have a motion in second, final reading on both tracks, all in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it.
Final reading orders number 16046, an order to provide for annexation of approximately 0.538 acre tract of land located at 3716, River Station Court in Darryl Creek Plantation, formerly known as River Station, identified by TMS 5960800048, number of block 46, block 8, depicted in a flat recorded by the Charleston County RMC office and booked VA, page 87. Final reading orders number 16047, an order to provide for the annexation of approximately half acre tract of land comprised of two parcels located at 991, 993 Theodore Road, identified by TMS number 614000566, and 61400044 respectively, and depicted in a flat recorded by the Charleston County RMC office and booked L14, page 421.
Committe reports accommodations, tax.
Mayor and council, accommodations did not meet and we have no report.
Bids and purchases.
Mayor, we did not meet and you don't have a report.
Economic Development Committee. Mr. Smith?
No meeting, no report.
Education Committee, Mr. Garch?
No meeting, no report.
Finance?
Finance did meet and we have a recommendation from committee to, we unanimously approved a donation to the South Carolina Gold Star Families Monument Project, which you heard from earlier this late evening in the amount not to exceed $10,000.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any questions concerning that request? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the ayes have it.
For a report, the committee received an update on the Whitehall Terrace Project. The project came in under budget, allowing additional items, a storage shed and a pavilion to be included under the Community Development Block Grant. Grant also received a very clean audit. That concludes my report.
Fire Committee?
We didn't meet, but the report that the chief has given me, it's, number of calls, fires, 14, medical, 423, other three, 11, for a total of 748, number of calls.
Human Resources?
Oh, we didn't have any meeting.
Patriots Point Development, no meeting. Planning Committee?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we've already had all our action items discussed tonight. We had three other items. One was a discussion regarding the Old Village Historic District Commission. There have been some concerns raised to council regarding that commission and the committee directed staff to begin reviewing the ordinance and guidelines with the chair and the vice chair of the commission and if there are any recommendations from those folks to bring those forward back to the committee. There was also discussion regarding buffer yard requirements. We recognize that there are situations perhaps when there needs to be special circumstances and amendments perhaps made. Right now, the staff does not have the ability to change or act not in accordance with the ordinance and so the committee directed staff to draft language allowing the design review board to approve adjustments to buffer yards in special circumstances. We also had a discussion, the consideration of final draft of proposed modifications and associated text amendments to the submittal and review process for sketch plans, preliminary plans, impact assessments and plan developments, as well as tree assessments and mitigation, and consideration of the final draft of the third-party commercial building plan review policy. With all of that, the committee directed staff to proceed with the text amendments and associated public hearings for the changes to the submittal and review process. And Madam Mayor, that concludes our hearing.
Thank you. Police Legal and Judicial Committee did meet, we have an action item under council new business considering the amendment to chapter 92 of fire prevention rules and I'll submit my report to the clerk. Public Services Committee?
Public Services did meet, we had a pretty full agenda. First thing I would like to bring to your attention is that on July 21st at Alhambra Hall from 5:30 PM to 7:00, we're going to have one of the drop-in style meetings to show what's coming up around January for the undergrounding and realignment of sewer, stormwater and power lines in the Old Village on Pitt Street. That's expected to last about two months and SE and G's forcing it out of 30 days. We want to have a public meeting so that especially the businesses in that area will understand what's being done to mitigate any business interruption and I encourage town council members, if you can, to please be there. That's the 21st at Alhambra Hall, 5:30 to 7:00. The second thing we discussed was the tree ordinance and easement ordinances involving our infrastructure, especially our stormwater infrastructure. We run into situations where we have an easement, we have a drainage adjustment and we go to do some work and Jody's crew goes to do some work and there's some trees, there's some shrubs or something that worked there in the past. And so the committee asked the staff to bring recommendations in regards to clarifying our tree ordinance pertaining to infrastructure improvement projects and then we were given three courses of action on what to do when we have to disturb something of the landowners and the committee unanimously directed staff to stick to our current ordinances concerning those and it is the lowest cost to the town. So, you know, it's a little bit involved, but we tried to give staff the best direction we could on what to do about that. The third topic we discussed was the widening of Highway 41, which, you know, nobody knows everything that's going to be on the county's, what would you call it, proposed half cent sales tax, but we wanted to know what the long-term ramifications would be to us if Highway 41 is widened in some same fashion that Johnny Dodds was. In our best estimation is it will add about $313,000 to $350,000 a year to our budget to maintain it if it is landscaped anything like Johnny Dodds is. We know that nobody knows exactly what's going to happen, but we just wanted to be looking down the road. As we've said many times, sometimes things happen and money comes in from other sources and then we're stuck with the long-term expense and maintenance. So we took a look at that. The fourth thing we looked at was issues of growth and the impacts on public services and Mr. Weiss gave us a presentation on our manning levels over the past as our population increased. We talked about what levels of service we wanted to maintain and we got input on what growth would cost us in the future when we have to add another truck, when we have to add new personnel. So we feel like as a committee, we have a handle on that as we look forward. I have a report that I will give to the clerk. That ends my report.
Thank you. Recreation Committee?
Recreation did not meet, but we had some interesting numbers to give you and some events. The department's summer camps are in full swing in all locations. We also had a pretty good junior golf tournament out of Patriots Point before they tore up the golf course, but we had 35 players out there, age 8 to 18, including some gals, and everybody had a good time. We did 1,258 swim lessons in June, that number continues to amaze me, but for the month of June, we also had 1,400 youth and almost 800 adults participate in athletic leagues. Senior center current membership is 2255, tennis center membership is 971. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Transportation Committee did not meet, there's no report. Mr. Smith, Water Works and Water Supply?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Water Supply did not meet the water commission report from Water Works. June commissioners approved resolution to establish customer fees and charges, make appropriations, adopt operating budget, two-year capital budget and capital improvement program for Water Works for the year of 2017. One item of note, after engaging a focus group of customers, the commissioners modified the late payment fee to $5 plus a 2.5% interest rate on the unpaid balance based on the customer's recommendation. The commissioners recognized Mount Pleasant Water Works Finance Department for receiving Government Finance Officers Association, 2015 Certified Annual Financial Reward, Report Award. Interesting to note, it's been 20 years in a row they've received that over at Water Works. So shout out and good job to all the folks over at Mount Pleasant Water Works for their good financial report. It's been submitted to the clerk and that concludes my report.
Thank you for that. Mr. DeMore?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make one comment. I just want to thank Mr. Haney. During your report, there was a lot of forward thinking, a lot of looking ahead, looking at issues and I appreciate that because I think that keeps us out of trouble in the future. So many of your items has talked about looking ahead and projecting costs, I just wanted to say, I appreciate that approach.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Administrative report is, there is no report. Council Business under new business under number one is the adoption of a resolution to support the issue by South Carolina Jobs. The $11 million, as we heard in the public hearing earlier.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion in second for approval. Any questions? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it.
I just wanted to.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
That's okay. Keep going.
Okay. I'd be glad to take your comment, I circle. Item number two is the first reading of an ordinance to amend the fire code, section 92.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion in second to approve. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the ayes have it.
First reading orders number 16057, an order to amend portions of chapter 92 of the Mount Pleasant Code of Ordinances entitled Fire Prevention.
Moving under the old business, under final reading, it's an ordinance to amend the provision of the excavation.
Just as you received in your packet of information, there were two minor changes to the ordinance, this one was the penalty for $1,000 and we had another brief language change, so if you're willing to approve it, it would have to be a motion to amend.
Move for approval as amended and submitted. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve as amended and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the ayes have it.
Final reading orders number 16049, an order to amend the provisions of chapter 158, excavation and construction of public property in the Mount Pleasant Code of Ordinances.
Item number two is the final reading of an ordinance authorizing and approving a grant of special easement to the Mount Pleasant Water Works.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the ayes have it.
Final reading orders number 16048, an order to authorize and approve a grant of special easement to the Mount Pleasant Water Works relative to the Mount Pleasant Fire Station 6, across of B8, Carolina Park.
Item number, no, we have a speaker signed up, yes, Jim.
Yeah, Sally.
You hung in there.
My name is Sarah Sally Jacob, 1152 Village Creek Lane, apartment one, and I'm here to speak on the issue of purchasing this property for recreation. First of all, I think we are not budgeted for that purchase at this time. The second thing is, the town has spent millions of dollars on Shen Creek Park and on other parks. You have not put any investment into housing. We are on a, we have a housing task force right now, you're not even giving us a chance to report. Before you want to take money and put it into purchasing some fields, if those people in those communities want those fields, raise the money, buy it. But at least wait, we have a budget, we've set aside a certain amount of money for recreation, Stick to your budget and give us a chance to come and ask you to budget some money for things that we also think are priorities.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Item number C is executive session. We have two issues. One is a possible purchase of property for recreational use. This was brought forward by Mr. Owens. Mr. Owens, we have four people who have sat up here all night to hear us discuss this. Could we discuss this in open session?
Not really, we've got some financial information we need to pass on to council.
Okay. Excuse me?
May I speak to this, or am I overboard?
Well, you didn't have the floor, but I can give you the floor.
I'm asking?
Yes.
Thank you. I would like to add that I was approached by some people today who want to be part of this process. There's a role for the town to play, and that if we could do this in executive session, it would keep us from having to make public other things that are in the works for the good of the town and will not affect the price or the timing of that, and it would save the town considerable amounts of money if we could do this in executive session.
I thank you for that, and I appreciate that. I do want to make some comments in open session regarding this that don't have anything to do with your request. I do have some suggestions about your request that I would like to be made public, and they are, thank you for your thoughtfulness, Jim, in green space, but I also told you that I was going to do some homework, and I was going to be open-minded. So I want the community to know the process that I've been through that doesn't have to do with your request. And that is, I did speak with property owner Stefan Hoyer, and he indicated he's not in a hurry to sell the school, and he's actually working to help save the school. I also believe that he fully supports the work that's being done there, and they have a lease agreement with Trident that will not expire. We have a lease agreement with Trident right now that will expire in August. We also have a contract with US Soccer to provide fields which expire in 2017. So some representatives of Trident Academy have told me that their current plans include placing no trespassing signs around the perimeter of the field, which they've already done. And in the near future, I believe the board of directors has voted on fencing it. So before we go in to discuss your request publicly, I would like to reiterate what Sally said. We have $40.76 million CIP projects ahead of this, and we could very easily offer to lease the fields for $100,000 a year for five years on a declining rate and ending at a $40,000 rate. That would give Trident many years to try to find a suitable developer that we would welcome and the neighborhood would welcome, and I would request in that that we tell them to please take down the no trespassing signs and please take down the fence. So I just wanted to make that public before we discuss your effort, which is very important to me. So moving forward, do we have a motion going to executive session?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second? Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Good Lord, good Lord. I need a quorum. Thank you very much, ladies, for waiting with us. We are out of executive session where we took information on the potential purchase of property for recreational use, and there was no action and consideration of performance to the Star Commission Board of Zoning Appeals, a Commercial Design Review Board...
I know you like to talk about what I've been talking about.
And there was no action. We had no applicants for two of the boards, and we had one applicant. We feel there may be some confusion in the boards they're applying for. So if there's nothing else to come forward, this council adjourned.